Okay, we're gonna start the meeting, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. And first, we'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you, we'll move on, anybody that has a disclosure, pecuniary interest, they can make it now or at any point in time through the meeting. And then I need a motion to confirm the agenda. Moved by Doug Callum, seconded by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? It's carried. Okay, and next we move on, we have consent agenda, items 5.1 to 5.4. And that includes the minutes, is any, and Tyler, you want something, say something?
Yes, so through the warden, there is going to be a slight change to the minutes for item 11.2, we're going to be adding the word support, it was missed out in the original, when it got sent, but it has since been changed.
Okay, does anybody want to see anything pulled out of that consent agenda? Counselor Casenberg?
Not pulled, can I have Tyler read back to us the exact text of 11.2, I think you said?
Okay. So, through the warden, the resolution reads that counsel direct staff to support and send a letter from the Reform Coalition of Purthies to MP Nader and MPP Pedants.
That's okay for you, Todd? Yeah, he's nodding his head, does anybody want to see anything pulled out of there other than that brief discussion? There is some stuff in there on SWIFT and whatnot, so just when I see that SWIFT on, I'm gonna mention next meeting, which would be a week from today. Counselor McKenzie forwarded me the stuff from Roma with regards to the presentation, that's gonna be on your consent agenda next week. Wasn't, didn't get it in time to get it on this week. Anyway, so I have a motion here, the county, the council receives the consent agenda, items 5.1 to 5.4, and approves the January 14, 2021 council minutes, moved by. That would be Counselor Duncan and Counselor I. Those in favor? Scared, thank you. So, next we have public meetings, public and delegations, and we don't really have any, so we're gonna move on to 7.1.1 LPAT decisions concerning applications for the official plan amendments by, and I'm gonna pronounce this improperly, Andres De Zera. And by 1579158 Ontario Inc., OPA 130. So we have David to present that.
Yes, good morning, members of council. I'd like to present our report concerning this matter. So the report before you this morning is concerning local planning appeal tribunal decisions regarding official plan amendments 129 and 130. These OPAs affect property described as part of lots 42 and 43 Thames River concession Blanchard Ward in the township of Perth South. Just to summarize, concerning these applications and the appeal, in October of 2012, the property owners made application to amend the County of Perth official plan for the purpose of changing the land use designations on the subject properties from agriculture to mineral aggregate resources in order to allow for development of a future sand and gravel pit operation. On November, in November of 2012, County Council passed a resolution to defer decision regarding these applications pending receipt of additional information from the applicants concerning various issues that had been identified for the proposed development of the subject properties. On November 10 of 2017, the applicants filed an appeal with the local planning appeal tribunal, tribunal or LPAT on the basis of no decision being made concerning the applications within the statutory period required for official plan amendments. Corresponding appeals were also filed for related zoning bylaw amendment applications as well in response to the non-decision. In November of 2020, a settlement hearing was held to attempt to resolve outstanding issues. And on December 1 of 2020, the LPAT issued an order to allow the appeals and approve official plan amendments 129 and 130. Accompanying orders were also issued to approve the corresponding local zoning bylaw amendments as well. For cases such as these, where an appeal of a council decision or non-decision is filed, the LPAT assumes the role of approval authority in place of council concerning land use decisions. In its role as approval authority, the LPAT has issued orders to approve official plan amendments 129 and 130 as detailed in Schedule A to our report. Respective bylaws are hereby presented to County Council to implement the orders of the local planning appeal tribunal. That is a summary of the subject at hand and the contents of our report concerning these LPAT decisions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that members of council may have, thank you.
Okay, any questions for David, Bob Wilhelm?
Yeah, just, just a little more background information on that. When that came, when the application came to Perth South back in 2012, there was issues with the road hauling, the neighbors in the area, of course, were very upset, and so we tried to work out a deal with the pit owners and we could not get that road, the haul road ironed out and we wanted some help with improving the road to handle the heavy trucks and so they were steadfast that they would not assist us. And so we did not, it's divided by an unopened road allowance. So we did not give them approval to use that unopened road allowance. And Perth County deferred their decision based on our request. And so over time, they have approved helping us improve the road, put in some safety measures, a couple pull offs for trucks when they meet. And so strengthening the road and we've limited it to one road only, so with that, we felt that we were agreeable with that and hence the decision from LPAT.
Okay, thanks Counselor Wilhelm, anybody else got any questions on that? No comments? Not seeing any hands. Okay, I have a motion, County Council received the report entitled LPAT decisions concerning applications for county official plan amendments by Andre De Zedura, OPA 129, and by 1579158 Ontario Inc., OPA 130 for information. And that the respective bylaws be presented for approval. Moved by Counselor Callum, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm. Those in favor? Let's carry, thank you. And those bylaws we'll do later. Okay, next, we have economic development. Development of Charter for Perth County on Anti-Racism and Inclusivity Report. And we'll need Justin for that, I believe.
Good morning, can council hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, can't see you, but I can hear you. And we have Sarah up there as well.
I'm not having the option to, to turn on my camera here, so I'm not sure if that is something on my end or or on your end, regardless, I will proceed.
Okay, thanks Justin.
There we go, can council hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you, I can see Sarah, I still can't see you, but we're good. Oh, there he's on the bottom corner, we're good, Justin, thank you.
Okay, great, sorry for that. So I will go ahead and share my screen unless Tyler is already doing so. He'll bear with me a quick second. Great, you should all be seeing my first slide there.
Yep, we're good.
Excellent, thank you. So, good morning, Warden Heskeyson and members of County Council, in your agenda package is a report on the development of a Perth County Charter on anti-racism and inclusivity, as well as a copy of a PowerPoint that I will be using today to walk through the report contents. As I mentioned, I'm driven by my colleague Sarah Franklin, who is a contributor to the report, as well as assisted with consultation and research, including conducting many of the Zoom telephone calls with communities that we look to for guidance on a process for developing a charter. So at the meeting of December 3, 2020, council passed a motion that staff bring a report back to council on a charter for Perth County on anti-racism and inclusivity. At the same meeting, council also passed a motion to investigate community support for multicultural celebration month in June to correspond with Canadian Multiculturalism Day on June 27. So while the two motions were separate, staff did utilize opportunity when speaking with stakeholders regarding the charter to also identify whether there was community support for the multicultural celebration month. In terms of methodology undertaken to inform the report, so the first step was to do a situational analysis to identify what other related work had been done and is ongoing. We also looked at some of the best practice research to understand how other municipalities have established charters or similar initiatives and engaged with the communities through some key stakeholder interviews to understand both their desire and expectations for the charter. In terms of some of the findings from the situational analysis, county and community partners have previously engaged in studies and completed work that is reflective of the inclusivity values we would expect to find in the charter. We can trace some of this back to the Social Research and Planning Council's report on embracing diversity from 2017. Come, report, for example, the county and community partners had led an application to bring a local immigration partnership to Perth County. Another example of actually, kind of the report was the establishing, was establishing some sporting training and workshops on inclusion, anti-racism, systemic discrimination, and culture awareness within the economic development work plans. And these again were in response to the community and findings from that report in 2017. In terms of some of the best practice research, staff looked at 12 municipalities, including a mix of urban and rural to understand how similar charters have been developed. Unfortunately, there was no, or there is no prescribed or yet for method for how a community should develop a charter. Each community that we looked at developed their charter based on these local context and circumstances. This included municipalities that had started this process a number of years ago, those who had done so more recently, those with dedicated resources and in-house expertise, and those operating within existing overarching regional or community frameworks. So in speaking with stakeholders, it became clear that there are many interpretations of what a charter is and what it should include. So this broad spectrum of both approaches and interpretations of a charter really emphasizes the need for a Perth County approach that is suited to our local context. Some of the common themes, sorry, jumped ahead there. Some of the common themes through consultation with stakeholders and the research was that a charter as a statement of values and principles on inclusivity and anti-racism should achieve a number of objectives, including A to enhance the feeling of belonging among underrepresented groups, including, but not limited to visible minorities, BIPOC and LGBTQ2+ communities, by seeing their concerns and well-being considered and expressed publicly. The charter should reaffirm the county's public commitment to anti-racism and inclusivity as a priority. And a charter should also support and stimulate meaningful actions, so these are some of the common themes that we found across charters what they should be doing. So through our consultation efforts, we did gain a greater awareness of the community safety well-being plan that is currently being developed by partners across the county, including local municipalities, police services, United Way, school boards, healthcare and social services. This plan is a result of extensive community consultation that took place during the second half of 2020, including those of diverse backgrounds. While the plan is still being developed, it is evident that diversity, equity, and inclusion are going to be one of the key priorities for actions that was identified. And we did identify that participation by the county in implementing this community safety well-being plan. Once it is fully developed, on any, and as well as participating in any of the implementation groups, be one of the ways that the proposed charter as that statement of values and principles proposed here can be supported by actions. Finally, while we were primarily consulting on the development of the charter, we did take the opportunity while engaging with stakeholders to identify whether there was community support for the multicultural celebration month in June. We did find that there was widespread agreement that celebrating this month through example profiling origins and stories would be a meaningful initiative. And going forward with the celebration, the county was encouraged to start small, focus on building relationships and to gradually look at ways to enhance and expand such a celebration over time, so really to, to start small and build over time. In terms of the proposed charter development process, we broken it down here into five steps, starting I was some rough timeline, starting as early as February. So step one would be the development of the draft charter, so building on the, the common values and principles from other charters that we looked at, as well as preliminary consultation. We further engage this community to help understand which of these priorities and values and principles are, are most important and most relevant in the Perth County context. Step two would be the charter being circulated for community feedback, so once the values and principles have been identified, prioritized and evaluated, the draft charter made available for feedback from the community. This would be an opportunity to validate the charter, identifying gaps, and ensure that the community had a chance to provide any further input. Step three would be the revisions to the charter based on the feedback, so this third step would include incorporating and assessing any of the feedback received from the consultation period into the draft charter. This would also inform the report to council on how revisions have been made and how feedback was addressed within the revised draft. Step four would be the final charter for council adoption, so this fourth step would involve bringing back again, the amended draft charter with an accompanying report in and around May for council review and adoption. Once adopted, the charter would be published on our public website, as well as uploaded internally to the county's internet SharePoint site for internal reference and use. And then the fifth and final step here is the, is a process for a charter review, so this could be done either annually or semi-annually to provide a regular process to check in and ensure that the continued, ensure the continued relevance of the charter over time. So in terms of the ongoing use of the charter, we highlighted a few of the ways how similar municipalities have incorporated a charter into the organization based on, based on our research, so this includes using the charter as a tool to communicate the county's commitment to diversity, inclusion, and racism. Using the charter as a guidance document to reference when initiating specific diversity and inclusion initiatives across the county's divisions. Using the charter to develop, to demonstrate how diversity and inclusion are an important driver when delivering annual business plans and reference in conjunction with the county strategic plan. Using the charter to highlight how diversity, anti-racism, and inclusionary values are considered within regularly reports to council. And finally, using the charter by council to support decision-making through the application of an inclusionary and anti-racism lens. So this diagram here attempts to show how the charter would fit in within the organizational context as proposed here. So the green boxes represent those county-led initiatives, with the blue boxes representing those initiatives led within the community. So as you can see, the charter as envisioned here would serve as an overarching document, complementing the county strategic plan. And subsequently, annual business plans, any strategies, work plans, as well as individual projects and policies and reports to council would be able to reference the charter and draw on it to ensure continued alignment. And then in the blue area there, we talked about the forthcoming community safety well-being plan and that the county could participate and support any of the identified initiatives from that plan that aligned with the charter values and principles. So in conclusion, there are four recommendations attached to the report for consideration, including to receive for information, to carry out proposed process or charter development, to direct staff to engage this community safety well-being plan, committee on activities that support inclusivity and anti-racism in line with the charter values. And finally, for economic development tourism to incorporate activities that support the multicultural and celebration month within their work plan. And without, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay, so if we can get the thing off the screen and then I can see, there we go. Perfect, questions or comments for Justin, or I guess Sarah is actually on here too, so. Any comments or questions in regards to that report, Counselor McDermott?
Oh yeah, as for the community committee, is it possible for us to find out who's on the committee and what data they're using?
Yes, through the warden, I can say that the, the committee is made up of municipalities, school boards, I don't have the exact names of the members, but it is municipality, school boards, healthcare, public health, as well as the police services. So those, those are the organizations represented, United Way as well. Those are the organizations, but I don't have the specific membership in front of me. But that's something I could definitely provide.
Counselor Wilhelm. Very good report. I would just like to comment on the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. That is out in its draft report. I encourage everyone to review it and send in comments and concerns so that it can be finished off. But that's an excellent report and encourage not only councils, but all of the community throughout Perth County to review it and give some input while it's still in draft form.
Other comments? Or questions? Counselor Casenberg?
I'll make some comments when we have a motion on the floor, if you don't mind.
Okay, so I've got a motion here. The Perth County Council receives the development of a charter for Perth County on anti-racism and inclusivity report for information. That council directs staff to carry out the proposed amendment, a proposed development plan to bring forward a draft Perth County Charter on anti-racism and inclusivity. And council direct staff to engage with the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan Committee so the county can work in collaboration to support collective activities on inclusivity and anti-racism. And that council direct staff to incorporate activities that support a multiculturalism celebration month in June to correspond with Canadian Multiculturalism Day on June the 27 into the Economic Development and Tourism Work Plan. So, to comment on that, we need a mover in a second, or or it gets dropped, moved by Counselor I, seconded by Counselor Wilhelm, comments, Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Warden and fellow counselors. I do want to make a few comments today on the matter, I think it's an important matter, a matter affecting a growing number of people in our county, and certainly it's a matter of about human decency as well. I'm interested in outcomes in this area of effort, but I know that I believe that this is a journey, not a project, and so there are some concerns that I'll legitimately express to encourage those best possible outcomes. I want to say, as I've said all along in this matter, that I am a white cis male. I can acknowledge that I am at the pinnacle of privilege that you hear about. This statement means that I have never felt discrimination or excluded because of my race or my skin color. I have, as we all do, felt excluded in some ways over 55 years of living. I have been excluded as a result of health, because I am a severe asthmatic. Have been excluded in matters political sometimes, holding different views than what is considered mainstream from time to time. But these are petty, small exclusions in the big storm of human exclusivities. I cannot relate to what is faced by BIPOC. I have no experience with it. I can at most hope to be an ally, someone who, amongst other things, encourages public policy that allows the worth and dignity of all to be not just recognized but celebrated. I think this effort does represent progress towards outcomes, I won't say I believe it's the best way. Here's why. Like me, I suspect staff charged with leading this cannot fully relate to being BIPOC. It is my earnest hope then, that beyond the borrowing from research work of others, as suggested in notions of borrowing from the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan work that is in progress, staff will immerse themselves in allyship. This is not a quick project, I appreciate that staff have put in timelines making this look project-like and achievable quickly, and I applaud the ambition that's shown in the report. But this is a process which requires listening, reading, silence, and even some time. I trust that any staff we commit to this effort will understand the importance of this work and will review great works perhaps by Ibrahim Kendi, the books Me and White Supremacy and White Fragility, and will work closely with BIPOC in our community. I am anxious that in the day-to-day efforts, staff will need BIPOC to turn to, to seek advice from, and it may even be appropriate for a daily or at least frequent check-ins. We may want to engage a consultant with lived experience to support what lies ahead. I have a small concern about the optics of having staff in economic development lead this process. They are a good focused team, it has nothing to do with their hearts or their usual skills, and I don't know enough about their experience in this sort of work to offer any further comment. What concerns me, and I say this advisedly, is that by putting a project of this scope under the umbrella of economic development, we may suggest that BIPOC are resources, economic resources. That is absolutely the wrong frame of reference. I trust our team will act with sensitivity to this. I am further concerned that we expect that council will be the place to monitor and shape our actions moving forward. We can't ignore that we are not very diverse racially. And so I am concerned that we have a mechanism for monitoring and even future engagement which relies on us, at this moment, 10 white people, to be steering and judging performance. I personally feel that's inadequate. We are placing hope in the work of another committee or group, the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, to significantly support our work and expecting that to yield quick fruit. I have asked for more detail on their work in progress and the constitution of said committee like Counselor McDermott has. They have an important job to do. I just hope that what they have done today truly does support this effort and that they don't mind us coming up alongside them to evaluate data relevant to our work on inclusivity and diversity. I hope they have enough that is ready for public use. And it sounds from Counselor Wilhelm like they may have. I haven't heard much said about the reaction to this report by BIPOC. I understand some consultations were done, but we don't have parties like Mr. Wardofa or others here today to give us input on whether this plan will meet with their confidence. I wish I had that information. I have started that process of asking for comments from him, but have not yet heard back. I hope we remain flexible about inputs that may come from relevant parties in the coming days. I want to see a charter, I think everybody knows that very well. I want to see us make commitments to inclusivity and diversity and anti-racism. I love the idea in this report that the charter will give us yet another lens on our work, as it should. I appreciate that a periodic review process will be included, and I, and I think that was well stated. With my reservations about the lack of comment from the Multicultural Association, with my reservations that staff needs embedded BIPOC advisor, and with my reservations about the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan being a rich and available source for this work, with my reservations about the lack of clarity of what more besides a project to generate a charter we can and will do, and with reservations about a lack of a council learning program or learning plan. Nevertheless, I can support this effort. It will get us going down the right path towards outcomes that I hope reflect the richness of our communities and of our home. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thanks Todd. Justin, Sarah, any comments to those comments, or I look for more comments?
I guess just definitely noting those concerns in terms of the path forward.
Okay, yeah, I think the community, so, community well-being plans, they've been out, well, they've been working on them for a while, they're actually all out in draft form, each lower tier should have one. Including the city of Stratford. Anyway, as Counselor Wilhelm said, they do make some interesting reading. Anyway, any other comments or questions with regards to this report from someone else or anyone else? Not seeing any hands go up. Nope, okay, I've had a motion that was moved and it was seconded. Those in favor of that motion? That is carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. We will move on to the next part, and that is, oops. Corporate Services? Corporate Services. And we're gonna start with write-off of provincial offenses fines. And we will need Linda.
Good morning.
Oh, here we go. There's Linda.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, counselors. I'm here to report my annual write-off report. It's uh, in accordance with our policy. It's simply a housekeeping matter. The seven cases in front of you uh, have been identified to me by the collection agencies. They've tried to collect. They've discovered they're not collectible. I know it's um, I'm looking for a resolution from council to complete the write-off process.
Okay. Any questions for Linda on her report? Not seeing any hands. Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the write-off of provincial offenses fines for two thousand and twenty. And that council approved the write-off of seven fines totaling forty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars forty cents as listed on the attached write-off of provincial offenses fines over one thousand dollars in according with, in accordance with policy POA slash one point oh two. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Any questions? Last chance. Those in favor? Scary unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move on to the weed report. Tree and weed report, I should say. No, it's just a weed report. Okay, so do we have? You're addressing that? So Tyler Sager is gonna lead this one?
So through the order before council is the Perth County Weed Report for two thousand and twenty presented and prepared by Marvin Smith, presented by myself. Um, not much to really note in this report besides the fact that there was twelve complaints that were received in two thousand and twenty regarding weeds. Um, and none of those resulted in written orders. So if there's any questions, comments, happy to take them at this time and pass them off to Marvin.
Questions with regards to the weeds? And that's noxious weeds, not marijuana weed. Just, you know. Not seeing any questions. I got a little quick one. So I see the two additional. So they've added these two to the noxious. And that would be velvet leaf and purple loose stripe. So now you could actually phone in and complain about those?
Through, through the order, that is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to verify that because that, they are an issue. Okay, that's good. Okay, I have a motion here that Perth County receives the Perth County Weed Report two thousand and twenty report for information. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Eggers. Last chance for questions? Those in favor? Gary. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the tree report.
So through the order, uh, for council, the November two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report. Uh, this report comes every month from Marvin. If there's any questions, please let me know and I'll, I'll pass those on. Uh, there was two requests by landowners. Um, and then eight responses to submissions and notice intent for the month of November.
Okay, so you've heard Tyler's report and you've seen the report in your packages. Questions on the tree report? Not seeing any hands. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the November two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report, report for information. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? Gary, thank you. And next on the agenda, we have the investment portfolio.
We, so through the order, we have December's tree inspector's report.
Oh yeah, we had two. That was sorry. Last one was November. Now we got December.
So, so through the order, uh, same similar report. Uh, this covered December of two thousand and twenty, finishing off the year. Uh, one request by a landowner and seven submissions for notice intent. Um, again, if there's any questions, concerns, please let me know and I'll pass those on to Marvin for uh, for comment.
Again, questions on the December tree report? Not seeing any. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the November two thousand and twenty tree inspectors report for information. Moved by Counselor McDermott had his hand up the last time and Counselor Casenberg. No questions? Those in favor? Gary. Okay, now we moving on. Corey Bridges, Investment Portfolio Report.
Ready?
We're, yeah, we're good. Thanks, Corey.
Where we were when I got uh, cut out there. Um, um, thanks, Warden. Interested in council. The, what you have in front of you is a two thousand and twenty investment portfolio. Uh, historically, uh, without investment policy, we were just gaining interest on our cash balances. Uh, in November of two thousand and nineteen, council approved a investment policy. Uh, the first investment policy for Perth County, actually. Um, this investment policy allowed the, the treasurer to invest some monies into uh, longer-term investments. Uh, as identified in here, uh, there was three invest, uh, three amounts and three investments that, that Perth County had invested in. Um, they amounted about to seven million dollars. Uh, based on that seven million dollars, uh, for two thousand and twenty, the average annualized return for those three investments were five point eight two percent. Um, we did benefit from uh, the recovering markets uh, in the, after COVID uh, with the money being put in in May of two thousand and twenty. Uh, the investment uh, report here is the actual annual report that you should receive on an annual basis related to portfolios. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Corey on this report? Uh, we have Counselor Eggers, then we have Counselor Casenberg, and then we have Counselor McDermott. I'll start with Counselor Eggers.
Uh, so the money that we make off of these investments, do we put that back into reserves? Is that where it goes from each, each of the ones?
Yeah. That is correct. If you look at their uh, actual financial impact part of this report, um, basically the return money that we received on essentially the one investment that was patched out. One investment was patched out. The other two investments are still uh, in and the other one is earning slight interest. Uh, but basically what it's indicating is that, that it's getting put back into the capital reserves uh, and which helping are forecasted about percentage on what is showing up in essentially the ten-year capital budget that you have in your budget binders. Uh, so it does get put back into the reserves to help program, uh, work with the program that was within roads, bridges, uh, facilities, et cetera.
Thank you. Counselor Casenberg?
I think Counselor Eggers stole my question, but my other question is how do I get in on that? Can you manage my portfolio for me?
Uh, I, I'm not gonna take all the credit. Uh, Michael Ayers, who's our investment guy from CIBC, was the one that uh, provided me the PPNs and the type of investments to put the money into. Uh, again, we're still on a shorter-term investment. We need, we actually need this money within five years. Uh, when we get into a situation where it's longer, longer term, uh, there's potential more for growth in those uh, areas. But we don't have the reserve balances to uh, invest in anything pro, exceeding five years.
Uh, Counselor McDermott had a question, I believe.
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, the principal protected notes. So I understand that your principal, they're protected. Um, just a, a little bit of what you, what, what would the money go into that it would, uh, that your principal would be protected in?
Um, so the one note that we actually see the highest gain on is the bank index. So basically uh, three million dollars was put into uh, different banks uh, based on a, a weighted factor. So for example, uh, we'd be, we'd be put into CIBC, RBC, TD, uh, the bigger banks that we have. That index, that's the one that actually by the end of the year, we hit our cap and we saw a eight point four, four percent return. Uh, and since we put the money back in May, actually was closer to a fourteen percent return uh, on uh, the three million dollars and which was indicated there, we've got a two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars uh, at the end of two thousand and twenty for that uh, uh, that particular investment. Uh, the large cap investment is more into the large industry. Uh, and it's based on that index that with, with the, the two million dollars. And then the other one is essentially, it's a note, but it's more on a GIC rate and banker's acceptance. Uh, sorry. So that's basically the uh, diversity of the portfolio to date. Again, it's only uh, eight months in, nine months in. Uh, hopefully we can continue to diversify that portfolio going forward. Um, just to further to Hugh's question or sorry, Counselor McDermott's question, uh, we did reinvest the three million when we hit the cap back into the bank index again.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for Corey? Or comments, either one? I don't see any hands going up. Uh, yeah, congrats, Corey. That was a good reinvestment for, or a good return for really a non-speculative investment. Uh, one thing I might say is so you did a great job. Did they ever talk about investing in the S and P five hundred index?
No, uh, well, the only one that came due was the bank one. And they still see the upside on the banks uh, with basically uh, getting out of the cap. So basically what had happened with this year because of the volatility of the market, they put a cap on our return. Uh, so we exceeded that cap by the, by December. Uh, so basically they said that you need to uh, take, take the return on it and then reinvest. So we reinvested back in the bank again for another five years. Uh, and now there's no cap. It's just participation uh, part of it. So uh, we're looking at uh, fifty percent of the participation of that bank increases over the next five years.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty Investment Portfolio Report for Information. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, I believe. Those in favor? Carrie. Okay, next. Operation Budget. Corey, you're still up?
Yep. Uh, thank you, Warden and Council. Uh, so what we'll have for you today is the operational budget. We'll be starting essentially in tab three of the binder. But I do wanna, uh, I'm gonna share my screen. Again, I'm gonna share my screen to show uh, the public the binder itself as we go through it. Um, but I, I'm gonna lead into that. We're gonna lead into with me doing a preamble and then uh, get into the operational budgets of the individual divisions. And then the division managers or directors will be presenting their sections of the budget binder uh, with a slide deck that they will be running. So when they come in, they will be sharing their screens for that purpose. So I'm gonna share my screen now.
Okay, and just before you start, Corey, we'll probably go to about ten thirty. And then we're gonna take a little break. Because this guy has to get up, move around, as I'm sure you probably will like to too. And then we'll go back and I'm not sure how long you want to stay at this. I'm assuming by about twelve, twelve-thirty, you'll have had enough of zooming a budget. We'll see where we're at and make the decision then as to how far we get along. Carry on, Corey.
All right, uh, so what you have in front of you is basically uh, the two thousand and twenty operating levy. Um, but I've also incorporated uh, growth from two thousand and twenty that will affect two thousand and twenty-one. So specifically, our growth is about zero point eight three percent of the levy. Uh, so therefore, a three and a half percent here is effectively a two point six seven percent levy increase uh, on uh, when you remove the growth compulsion, portion of it. Uh, the item underneath is again, is the median properties within Perth County. Uh, again, it's identified that a median property of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a singly detached home uh, will pay seventeen dollars and seventy-five cents. Uh, farmhouse incorporated with farmland at a value of uh, closer to one point uh, seven million. Uh, will have an increase of thirty-seven dollars and one cent increase based on what's provided in front of you. Um, I'm just gonna highlight that the city of Strafford approved their budget this week at two point zero two levy increase. Uh, so a median home in the city of Strafford, their increase based on a two point two, two point zero two percent is fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, that's what their increase is for two thousand and twenty-one. Okay. So back in the top three. So the first item within top three is basically the two thousand and twenty-one budget broken down into the areas that are affecting the levy. Uh, so you'll see the items in green are reductions to the levy and items in yellow are increases to the levy. And at the bottom line, it's three and a half percent. Uh, so our two major impacting areas is uh, paramedic services and which again, has been identified uh, is that uh, uh, resources for part-time hours were required to include, be included into two thousand and twenty-one's budget and itself is a two point six four percent increase. Uh, also in there, it will highlight again is a one point four eight percent is coming from the outside boards uh, such as social services, health unit, Spruce Lodge. Um, and uh, the other item, the one point one two effectively is the um, uh, reductions in OMPF.
Corey?
Yes?
I don't, it sounds like a lady. I don't know if you explained to everybody else the fifteen million dollars in the middle there. Oh, okay. I don't know. Everybody else should have caught that. Yeah, line, the line is fifteen million dollars over.
Yeah, the, that item is uh, what I identified to Counselor Ite is that uh, that is essentially within the revenue, our general levy from two thousand and twenty. We need to break it out for the budget purposes. So basically that revenue item is in this total for levy, but it needed to be broken out into the uh, bottom lines. So basically there's, in the actual projected, there's thirteen point four million dollars sitting in that total. Next item is a three-year operating budget. So what is identified in here is uh, the operations without the capital levy, uh, and looking at it three years. So what has been identified is that uh, uh, we're looking at a three point zero four percent operating increase for two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we're already forecasting a five point six nine percent increase for two thousand and twenty-two and another four point three five for two thousand and twenty-three.
So everyone knows, Corey, one percent equals approximately a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Is that correct?
That is correct. One percent levy is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is, uh, is where our major impacting factor is, is, is the OMPF. Uh, we only receive transition money. Uh, the locals do see, receive transition money, but they also receive other envelopes. Um, what I'm gonna highlight is here is that North Perth is out of transition. Perth East is out of transition. West Perth, my take on it is that they're gonna be out of transition in two thousand and twenty-two. And then Perth South will be twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four out of transition. This million dollars that we receive in two thousand and twenty-one uh, will be zero by the end of transition has been eliminated. Um, so in itself, this is the, the, the factor where we're trying to utilize reserves to mitigate that uh, uh, impact, this million dollar impact to our annual revenues that we will not see once transition is gone. So I'm going to bring up another slide. Uh, this in itself is within the budget binders. It's a, it's Perth County's mitigation strategy related to utilizing levy stabilization reserve to mitigate OMPF reductions. Um, so I'll just highlight that the blue line is our levy stabilization reserve balance. The purple line is what we receive annually for OMPF money. Um, and then the lot, smaller lines essentially are the utilization portion. The green is the utilization within the budget binders. And the blue line, the other colored blue line is our reductions in O M P F. What you'll notice here is that this balance, the blue line of levy stabilization reserve is getting lower, lower. It's even here. It's actually less than our, what we still have within revenue within O M P F. The strategy is, is basically this strategy in itself. If no surpluses are forecasted, by the end, we will have no levy stabilization reserve left once transition is gone. So that is, was what is within the binder for the three years. So that is, was what we showed is a five point six nine percent in twenty twenty-one incorporates twenty twenty, twenty, sorry, twenty twenty-two is incorporating that strategy. We lose a hundred and fifty-three, but we're using about a hundred and eighty thousand out of the levy stabilization reserve in the, in the future. So that's just the highlights on the strategy that is being provided to you within this budget binder and, and essentially getting us to three and a half percent. Sorry, I just closed out everything. I'm gonna go back to the binder.
Any questions for Cory on that last little bit?
Well, that essentially takes us to the end of tab three. And then we'll get into the actual numbers within, in the, in the individual sections of the binder. So if there is any questions, I'll be happy to answer them now.
Yeah, that's what I thought maybe. I can't see everybody on the screen, so they'll just have to speak up.
Right, I could stop my screen sharing if you want to take questions.
That's all right. No, just if people just speak up if they got questions up to this point, then.
Well, they're up there now.
Warden, any questions on that, what we just seen in tab three or comments? Not seeing any, so carry on to tab four Cory.
Okay. So within tab four, it's basically, it holds non-departmental council grants, not, and our shared services. So the first one off is, is basically council's budget and I'm actually gonna kind of just turn it over to Tyler. And he can speak to the council budget.
Thanks Cory. So, perfect. So through the warden, in front of you is the council operating budget for twenty twenty-one. It's essentially what twenty twenty looked like with just one area I'm gonna mention, which is the mileage. So the mileage is based off of five-year average. In twenty twenty was fourteen thousand. In twenty twenty-one, it has been reduced down to eleven thousand. The intent with this, obviously it's five-year average, we are optimistic that meetings will be held in twenty twenty-one. So that's why we're, we're keeping that amount in there. Other than that, as I say, the budget is very similar to twenty, sorry, twenty twenty. There's any questions or comments? I'll take those at this time.
Yeah, just add that to Tyler's question is that we, and we don't know when the pandemic's gonna end and we still wanna be flexible enough to be able to get back into normal operations. Basically, everybody's back at county council chambers, doing county council business. We know, we don't know when this pandemic's gonna end. So in the end, if, if again, mileage is not spent in, in these areas, my recommendation was, was to take those kind of COVID-related surpluses and utilize them in our twenty twenty-two budget.
Warden, I have a question. The cellphone, removing Warden's cellphone. Does that mean you've, you're fed up with it and you're getting rid of it totally now? Or does that mean?
That would mean I've used, I've used my own cellphone from the get-go. I've never used the county cellphone.
Okay, well.
And I just paid the bill when I paid my bill, cause I use it for myself and I use it for the county and I use it for Perth South. So I have never remitted any expenses to it and I'm happy with my own cellphone.
Well, I, I would agree with you, but I, I also feel that probably the county should be paying half your bill.
Well, I'll live. There is one question I have. And some of you are aware and some of you aren't. So last year we had county banquet, ten thousand dollars. Of course, you knew there was no banquet. We did do at Christmas time though, to show appreciation to the staff. We got a little thing put together for a, a little meal and a bit of cheese and a dessert. And they were very appreciative of it. So is that gonna show up out of that expense? Cause we're showing zero expense. And I know that wasn't near ten thousand. That was only peanuts compared to what the ten thousand was, but.
So through the warden, my understanding is this would have been distributed before the expenses came in for that.
That's right. Okay, yeah, we just got, we got this binder in December, right?
Right.
I just duly noted, there was a little expense there.
Just to add to that, that'll be with when we look at the actual year-end actuals. Again, we're still trying to close out twenty twenty and see where we're, we're sitting at, so.
And it would be nice to have a depreciation banquet this fall, but I'm not betting on it yet.
We're, we're hopeful that there is that type of appreciation at the end of twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, they're gonna have to get the vaccines going a little quicker. Anyway. Any, no questions? We will move on to grants. So who's doing grants? That would be Lori.
Right, through the warden, members of county council. When we're looking at the grants, North Perth seniors has put in a grant for eighty-eight eighty. That is a normal grant that they put in on a normal year. I did reach out to them and have confirmed, asked them if they absolutely need this grant this year given COVID. And they indicated that yes, they do. What they did in twenty twenty, they started off as they normally would with a regular activities for the seniors. And then when COVID hit, they moved to more personal contact with the seniors. They indicated that they did weekly check-ins to make sure that those seniors were taken care of and that they had somebody to connect with, because many, many of their members are widows or family, with families that are not in the area. So the coordinator indicated that she put in more hours than she would normally do in a year. She indicated in the summer of twenty twenty, when we had social distancing in place, they started with seniors. It's a spin-off of their senior dance program called Entertainment Afternoons and they held that at the Legion. They followed all protocols gathering restrictions and they hired entertainment groups. And they screened it to a limited of fifty seniors. And they would sit socially distanced in the Legion, of course, with masks on. And they indicated that while many struggled not to get up and dance, they were very appreciative of the opportunity to safely get out of the house, enjoy some music and some companionship. They said with the current stay-at-home order in twenty twenty-one, the coordinator is still staying connected with their seniors over the phone and by video chat. And they want to continue that this year. Once the stay-at-home order is lifted, they intend to return to their entertainment afternoons for the remainder of the year as long as COVID rules are in place. That will include theme days, special giveaways that the North Perth seniors can look forward to. And they stress the importance of seniors and not just from North Perth, but in the area to stay connected more so now than ever. So they are still requesting their grant of eighty-eight eighty this year. When it comes to the Perth County four-H clubs, they had indicated they still need the money for twenty twenty-one. And they indicated that, for example, they would be using some of those funds to set up an educational account for Zoom, which they understood might run them about eighteen hundred U S. So that will bring them into, you know, somewhere in, in the two thousand dollar range. And that will allow them flexibly for their clubs to still have meetings. And they, they assure county council, they would put that money to good use, but they would just do it in different areas. And they indicated the impact of COVID most hit their awards programs. And they moved that to drive-bys and pickup events and some awards were actually hand-delivered by the leaders. So for twenty twenty-one, they've already started their club projects. They are looking, they actually have a workshop this Saturday, which is going to lay out their, their plan for twenty twenty-one as far as they can go with COVID restrictions in, as well as if the restrictions are lifted. So they indicate that they are still requesting that money, that they still need it. I did have confirmation from the Plowmans Association that in twenty twenty-one, they have now decided that they do not need that twelve fifty, that we could remove that. So, and then for your tree planting programs, the fifteen thousand staff would certainly recommend that you approve that. Those are your grant requests.
Okay, questions or comments on what Lori's presented? Counselor Wilhelm, I think I see your hand, but I.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Perth County Gold, Go For The Gold removed. If you review their other general program, they've got listed in there as an expense too, so I think it should be removed.
Rhonda, I see you. Anybody else has questions? Just speak up, cause I can only see two or three counselors, but I see Rhonda.
No, all these items are, are a great cause. Just speaking to the seniors, I know they need the grant to get the grant from the government. They're a great group. They don't focus just on North Perth. I have had the opportunity to be at a dinner and, and a couple of things when Vince judged. He took one of us every year and there's people there from all over Perth County. So they do a great thing and, and I think we, we need to support them and the other things here too, the four-H, the, the tree planting and, and that. So I'd be in favor of leaving the rest of them. If, if the Plowmans Association would let out, yes, take them out for a year. And the four-H for gold, we could probably take them out, but everything else should stay.
Other comments or questions?
Doug Ite calling. I think the Go For Gold was only implemented for when they did go, right? It was North Perth Dairy Club, I believe. So they wouldn't have got that money right last year because there was no Go For The Gold, which is at the Royal Winter Fair. So we can stay there, but there probably won't be a Royal Winter Fair again.
Through the warden, that is correct. They, that amount is basically on there, but only if requested by Go For The Gold. And if they, if there is no event, then there, there, that amount will not be utilized in that year.
Other comments or questions? Okay, so we have general consensus that we remove the Plowman's twelve fifty and the Go For Gold is three hundred, right?
Yeah.
Anybody object to that? Can I have a motion to approve the rest of the grants? Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, second it. I can't see screens, so just yell. I see Counselor Agus had a hand up there, so I like to see a couple. Those in favor of that motion? So that is to approve the grants with the three hundred and the twelve fifty removed.
Yes, so eighty-eight eighty for the North Perth.
That's, yep.
Three thousand for the.
Four-H.
Four-H. And fifteen thousand for the tree planting program.
Yep. Okay, so that motion's on the floor.
Warden, Warden, I can see them, so I'll just let you know if, I'll tell you the two hands that show.
Okay, so all in favor of that motion?
Unanimous.
Okay, thanks Cory.
Okay. The next section is non-departmental. This is basically, that has no connection to departments. It houses some revenues and some expenses related to it. This is again where Counselor Ite indicated we had fifteen million in our actuals. Here's this thirteen point four million dollars and makes up that fifteen million that they show on that previous slide that was presented. Just to highlight here, here is where the O M P F money reductions are. Here is also where we've, as a staff, have recommended utilization of the levy stabilization reserve of about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And as well as modernization money as well. The other item is, is a lot basically due to interest, but the also highlight is this is where our community transportation money is. So for the year of twenty twenty-one, we're looking to spend about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But their corresponding side of it is that we have a conditional grant of about five hundred thousand with projected fee revenue to cover the remaining. So if we don't hit our targets for fee revenue, this amount, the provincial amount be hired and it'll totally offset the program itself. The only other item that's within here is NPAC. NPAC is what, what drives our assessment within and how individual properties get taxed. And they are looking at about a one and a half percent increase or eight hundred thousand dollars to be billed to the county for, for twenty twenty-one. If there's any questions on that, I'll be happy to answer them. I don't see any hands, Warden.
Keep going.
The next item again is the cost shared services. And to highlight again, here's what was budgeted for our share of the cost shared services for twenty twenty-one. A totaling of five point five million dollars. What I'll highlight is that in, in, we're forecasting close to six million in twenty twenty-two. And the major impact again is in health unit or the, here in Perth Health Unit. Cause we'll eventually get into that seventy-thirty split where the municipality has to pick up their portion of it. So if there's any questions here, I'll be happy to answer them as well.
Questions for Cory?
Bob has a question.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Cory, the health unit, their twenty twenty budget's supposed to be less than twenty twenty. And that was supposed to have been sent back or, or notified to you. And I was wondering if that was done. And is there any kind of adjustment for social services seeing as the amount of money the government has sent them over the last few months? I would think that they should be requesting less.
Through the warden, the item with the health unit is we essentially the staff has looked at to, to leave it at what the original amount was. And I think in the highlighted items from the Perth Health Unit, they did an adjust for the percentage change with weighted assessment from the, the previous year. We actually get hit with a, a little more because of our weighted assessment change, our increase in percentage over the previous year. Actually, I can highlight that in the next page. I, I don't know if everybody can read this. I'll try to zoom in. So in twenty twenty, our percentage of those services were fifty point one five percent. Based on weighted assessment changes, evaluations, and this is the last year of the phase in, our percentage for twenty twenty-one is fifty point eight two percent. So the increase from fifty point one five to fifty point eight two, we essentially are picking up more of the, those portions of those services. Paramedic services, social services, health unit, et cetera. So it'd be nice to just, I think with the health unit, to leave it there to help mitigate what we might see into twenty twenty-two. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Other questions? So I got a quick one and you probably don't know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. So they have done their reviews of assessments and they were supposed to be, NPAC was supposed to be phasing those in with their new assessed values beginning this year. And they've actually put that on hold. Is anybody in the lower tiers, or you heard, when they might bring those new assessments into reality?
Great question. I've been in contact with the province who's actually back to NPAC, who've pushed me back to the province. So NPAC has data, but they can't release that data until the province pushes go. And province pushes go is unknown to NPAC. So they're sitting in a holding pattern until the province says yes. So they're sitting in a holding pattern until the province says, yes, we're going to base it on 2019 valuations. And with that 2019 valuations, I and again, they have to determine what the phase in is going to be. I did voice my concerns with NPAC. And the province as well, that delay in assessment. And when you are looking at basically a property tax system that bases it on current value assessment. Delaying it a year and being five years out now from current value assessment. Provides skepticism to property tax owners because it's not current value. It it's based on 2016 values. So I'm my concern with the province is that if you delay it any longer. It's going to increase the skepticism to a citizen itself. Because their value of their house is in 2016. I'd love to keep my value at 2016 values of my house. It's it's way better than what it would be valued in 2019. And that in itself is the issue. So they, the province by delaying it. In itself is creating a issue with the overall private tax system on being current value. So I voiced my concern with NPAC as well as the province that they need to stop the delay. And push forward and provide the valuations at 2019 values. And my take on a delay, instead of a four-year phase in, you would have a three-year phase in and get back on track. That's my. Can take on it, but I'll I'll hear any other comments from council.
Counselor Agus, I can see her.
We did have NPAC come to Perth East and they told us exactly what Cory just said. I also asked the question if they were going to phase it in over a shorter period of time. And they had no answer for that, but I agree with Cory. They need to do something and they need to do it soon. So I guess I don't know if it would help if we made a resolution and sent it to the province. And ask for this to be looked at. Might be an avenue that we could go because. It it's going to cause problems as we go down this road.
Well, it's up to council what they want to do with it. Like my only thought, and I could be completely wrong, but. Once they start phasing in the new assessments. You're going to see a shift more back to residential because the last four years, it's all been shipped at the farmland. So which is part of the reason why the farmers are so concerned with their tax increases, but I think you will see that shift back to residential. That will also decrease the percentage of contribution by the county towards weighted assessment if that happens.
Through the Warden, Counselor Wilhelm has a question. Actually, we'll we'll go with.
I would agree. I would agree with Rhonda and perhaps you can take that to the Western Wardens meeting the next time you get together.
Well, the annual meeting's on next week from tomorrow. I don't believe there's anything on the agenda for add-ons, but. Once I find out who the new Western Ontario Warden Chairman is and I'll make sure to contact them and. Get it on their list.
Another question from Counselor Agus.
Perhaps perhaps when you have your conference calls on Fridays with your MP and MPPs, you could maybe bring it up then as well.
Yep, so this Friday, we've actually, we don't have one for once because I've had 30 already. So we're not actually meeting now until the same day as the Western Ontario Warden's meeting, but we're delaying our. Conference call till 3 o'clock so everybody can participate. So that will be a full day, but I will bring that up. But if you want, if you think we should send a. Send a. Motion and documentation to the province and somebody has to make a motion and somebody has to second it.
Yeah, Rhonda moving it. Second by Counselor Wilhelm.
Okay, and you want that to state exactly.
That the. NPAC, what do we call it? The the increases or the reassessments for for houses needs to go forward?
Well, just all property, actually.
Or all property, yeah. The assessments need to be implemented and put into place.
Yeah, Counselor Agus, I'm just wondering, Noel, if the. The resolution should state the the issue with assessment delay.
Yeah.
On a property tax system related to current value assessment. Provides an issue in the overall tax system.
Yeah, that's good.
So that line that Cory just said, I think is your second line in your motion. And just give us a second here because I'm making sure we do this right.
Through the Warden, Cory, can you just repeat that second line again, please?
The 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 issue with assessment delay. Basically provides an issue with the overall property tax system utilizing current value assessment.
If I might, that that sounds like a whereas at the beginning of the motion that you're sort of stating the. The framework with which the motion then encourages action. So that you might want that statement or a statement to that effect at the beginning of the motion to support the actual action.
So just give us a sec and when Tyler's ready, I'm going to get him to read something back here.
So through the wardens, we have where is council direct staff to send a letter to NPAC regarding reassessments for all properties needs to be implemented? And.
No, I think Counselor Kaisenberg wants the statement first before the direction.
Yeah. That's why we're just making sure this is right.
And I think it should be circulated to all municipalities. Okay, as well.
Well, I'm pretty sure the ones with a lot of farmland would think that's a good idea. Maybe not the ones that are strictly residential.
Oh, but the farmers are taking the brunt of it right now, so.
Through the Warren, this is why I've provided my concern is that. It feels like the urban center of Toronto is the pushing factor for the delay. And not considering the rural impact that the delay does cause related to urban rural mix.
Any closer there, Tyler?
That council direct staff to send a letter regarding the issue with assessment delays, which provides an overall issue with the property tax system. Am I getting that right, Cory?
Kinda, and this is the reason why I'm not in the position of a counselor on looking at motions as well as. I like assistance in in developing that, but I guess the flavor is is that. We want they, we want basically the province to push go and and stop the delay. So however, we need to word the direction to staff to do so. That's, I think that's what the direction from council will be probably.
Yes.
Aren't aren't we making, if I might, Mr. Warden, aren't we making a fairly strong statement that the the council? Asks or requests the province to get on with the implementation of the 2019 assessments or or. You know, directs NPAC to implement them? Isn't that what we want?
That's kind of what I would think, Counselor Kazenberg. I like the word not ask, request.
What if we took our break now, Jim, and give staff time to do this?
Yeah, I think that's what we're gonna do.
Come back in five.
Take a couple minute break and I'll have the brain trust here come up with a motion and we'll read it back. Five minutes, seven minutes. Everybody has to go on mute and turn their cameras off, I'm told.
Cory, can you come down here, please, to the boardroom? Thanks.
I brought it from home, homemade.
Homemade?
Jam, butter and jam.
That was smart enough to bring a muffin today. So we live, yeah? Okay, we're getting just about everybody back on screen. We've got Cory just went back to his office and we've got Bob. Matt's gotta come back. There's Matt. So we just have Bob Will, Councilor Bob Wilhelm, I believe. Well, we've got all but one, so. We're gonna read back the resolution here that we've come up with on the break and we'll see where that goes. So Tyler, if you want to read that back.
Perfect, thanks. Through the warden, so the resolution reads, whereas the property tax system is based on current value assessment, and whereas the current delay in assessment does not utilize the province's model of CVA. Therefore, County Council directs staff to correspond with the premier, the finance minister, the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Perth MPP, to move forward with implementing reassessment based on CVA, and that copies of the correspondence be sent to all Ontario municipalities.
Okay. What's people think of that? Counselor Casenberg?
Do we need to stipulate that we're talking about the 2019 MPAC assessment? Did I miss hearing that or?
We sort of did, but Cory said if we just put CVA, which is the current value assessment, which they already have, they're just not implementing it.
Through the warden, it could be the factor, what mine are saying is they could potentially use 2020 as evaluation date now because we have 2020. I don't want to say 2019, which then forces them to use 2019. So by leaving it open, they, I just, I don't, I'm no, no concern with using 2019 or 2020 as valuation dates.
As long as they use their current CVA. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Counselor McKenzie.
On your, on your list of people you're sending out to, I would also add, I think, Ernie Hardeman to that list as Minister of Agriculture. And did you have the finance minister, yep, did you have the finance minister mentioned there Jim? You read it off and I'm not sure who all you mentioned.
It was Premier Ford, the Finance Minister, Minister of Municipal Affairs, MPP, and we just added Minister of Agriculture, Ernie Hardeman.
Right, okay, thank you.
So everybody's good with that? We already have the motion in the secondary. Those in favor? Carry on. We're moving on. Okay, Cory.
I'm gonna share my screen again and.
We're at general liability.
Yeah, so within the general liability, basically within this is what council approved back in December of the year, a 5% increase over our general levy, I mean sorry, general liability in itself. This in itself, you'll see is the expense side of it, but then it'll get distributed to all the other divisions through overhead. So if there's any questions, I can answer. If not, then I can proceed on. And I'm not seeing any hands.
Then proceed on.
Okay, now we're into the divisional budgets in tab five. And in tab five, we have the CAO office and it started off, I didn't believe, I'm gonna pass it off to Lori to present the CAO division.
Thank you to the warden and members of council. You know, as we start into the divisional budgets, senior management, we worked on this as a group. And when we considered this, this package for you, we looked at what we accomplished in 2020 and the needs for 2021. And certainly, consideration given to 2020 is a year of adaptation and transformation because it brought with us many circumstances no one could have predicted. But I just want to commend the team who rose to the challenge by quickly shifting their work plan priorities, their locations, and adapting to that new technology. We maintained a high level of customer service excellence. And despite that unexpected shift, operations continued without interruption. The whole organizations remain mindful of the goals that were established in the 2020 approved strategic plan for growth and economic development, regionalization and service effectiveness, customer service excellence, community development and planning, and corporate sustainability. And as the group goes through their presentations, you'll see 2021 is looking ahead. So they have ambitious work plans, but still considering the regularly shifting pandemic circumstances as Cory alluded to earlier in his comments. So we will further examine the courthouse campus moving into the second phase of improvements. And we will, we will move towards AODA compliance standards. So you will find these budgets, it's a reasonable program that the staff have put together. They are committed to excellence in their day-to-day service delivery. They're gonna continue to examine policies, program structures, to make sure that we're sustainable, we're efficient, and we have good business continuity. So on behalf of the staff, as we move into this section of your budget, we want to say that we've worked together to present the responsible 2021 budget. We look forward to your deliberations and direction. With the first budget operating coming is the CAO office. This, the main point in this one is we do have an administration that continues on in 2021 to help support the department. We, I will tell you in the office supplies where we have a large number on the projected actuals, council will see that's mostly for plexiglass. So speaking back to the year that we've had, you'll find there's lots of office supply budgets that have plexiglass. Professional development, we didn't spend as much as we normally would because of COVID and the transportation accommodation section. But certainly, we did participate in Roma. Asset management is a skill set that I've been taking courses on for the last two years. That's a program through FCM where the amount is 80% paid by FCM. So I'm happy to report I will be on the last course, starting in April for asset management. And completion of that, we will have the designation of certified asset manager. So under special projects, we did not use any funds in that regard because we populated the office supplies in other areas for plexiglass that were funded through the COVID relief fund. Special projects in the past would have been, council may recall, we did a workload analysis. I think was the last time we used a special project account. The intra-departmental charges is your rent, and there's not much we can do about that. Public relations would have related to face masks, and we did have a retirement in 219 where we did have a floral arrangement brought in for that person. Your strategic initiatives in this particular budget, you will note $54,000. That relates to closing out the strategic plan with Mark Malali from Interthink. So other than that, it's a status quo budget. Are there any questions from council?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, thanks. Carry on. So we're moving on to.
This is okay, so this is what was gonna happen. So the next one is, I believe, HR. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen and then Marion will take over and will be using slide decks for the rest that they're gonna be utilizing themselves and flowing through.
Okay. So Marion's all but here, I see your name. And there she is. Hi Marion, you're good to go.
Before you go Marion, actually, there was a document that I kind of skipped over within the tab. It was essentially the salary analysis. So when speaking specifically to a division, if you need to go back to that salary analysis, please do so. Because that in itself is another way of looking at the people to provide the services that are in front of you. And it's kind of nice lead in with our HR manager to talk about people.
So Cory, I'm good to share my screen now? Yep. Perfect, okay. All right, so thanks for the introduction Cory, through the warden, members of council. So I'm pleased to provide you with the HR budget for 2021. The budget presented is fair and fiscally responsible and reflects the plans and priorities as outlined in the strategic plan. Briefly, as you have seen the PowerPoint presentation and the associated budget, 2020 was, I think, a pretty good success for human resources. We had some great highlights which were listed. And we were able to accomplish that with two full-time equivalents, myself and an HR generalist who started in March. You'll notice our budget for 2021 shows a slightly higher increase, and this is due to CPI and operational costs. But it represents a 0% change to the corporate levy. With regards to our strategic priorities, we will be supporting in 2021. Sorry, turn my page. We're continuing to enhance our policy and programs as they link to the strategic plan. So through, and as well, we are going to continue to establish service level agreements for HR advisory services with member municipalities, just on a, on an as required basis. So really up to the member municipalities should they wish to use these services or not. And again, increasing our focus on customer service, service excellence. So through our recruitment processes, retention of staff, succession management. And again, reflecting strategic priority number five, which is corporate sustainability. We've already updated our performance appraisal process. And we're gonna be moving and continuing onwards with that, especially looking at succession management and retention strategy for 2021. Were there any questions?
I'm looking for hands, I don't see any hands.
Then I guess we don't have any questions.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Marion.
All right, thanks.
Economic development, I believe is next Cory.
That is correct, so Justin will be speaking to his divisional budget, and he'll be coming in shortly.
Well, we're waiting for him. I do have a question on the CAO, if we could go back to that. There is going to be an admin assistant funded through modernization, is that, that's a start term or that's gonna be a full-time position then after this year?
Through the warden, that essentially is a two-year position based on the utilization of the modernization money that we have from what we received in 2019.
Right, but going forward then, that will come out of the general budget, correct?
Currently, it only is lasting for two years, so in 2023, it's not included in your levy amounts. It's a two-year contract.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you just brought up the word efficiency and modernization. I'll ask this question now instead of waiting. We just got noticed we can apply for more money for that? Are we looking at applying for something?
Through the warden, I believe that is correct. There is in the works, in discussions with the manager of IT and the CAO related to a potential look at GIS and the kind of an IT strategy for Perth County to put in an application to hopefully get funded for that type of project.
Thank you.
Justin's here and he's got his slides up, so I'm gonna turn it over to Justin Diaz.
Perfect. Thanks, Justin.
Great, thank you. So through the warden, please present the 2020 budget for the economic development and tourism division. As Cory had stated, we did, in the rest of the team, we did look at delivering a responsible but also making sure that we were continuing to support our businesses during this time. So in terms of the opportunities and challenges that economic development tourism is undergoing at this time, I've kind of outlined here both the challenges and corresponding opportunities that we see to deliver for our businesses during this year. So a challenge, you know, economic recovery will largely depend on factors beyond our local control. The opportunity there is we were able to secure significant grant funding through 2020 and into 2021 to help support some of that ongoing programming. Obviously, challenged tourism is facing major challenges in regards to border closures, travel restrictions, and consumer hesitancy in 2021. The opportunity we do see here is that shift towards hyper-local tourism. And, and there is a forthcoming provincial government tax credit to help stimulate that in province travel that we can hopefully help leverage. Another challenge was the inability to bring people and businesses together physically. So obviously, we're pretty much in the bringing people together business as economic developers and tourism. But the opportunity here is that we continue to develop virtual programming options to help support our ongoing programming continuity as well as assisting other businesses get online as well. The fourth challenger is businesses dealing with reduced revenue and planning code protocols and changing business operations. Obviously, businesses have been faced with unprecedented levels of adaptation and changing what they've had to do over this year. The opportunity we see is to develop a community improvement plan with code recovery components to assist businesses with adaptation, both for the current pandemic and also for the longer term. And then finally, in the challenges section, planned non-COVID related closures, so lost employment from things such as Maple Leaf and Continental. The opportunities here are new industries can be attracted that are focused on local growth and take advantage of existing infrastructure sites and American business. So as, as sun sets on some of those industries, we can help attract some new industries to take those places and replace that employment. So just some of the, some of the big budget drivers on our, on our operating budget for economic development and tourism. Again, we're continuing to maintain a level of service and support programming during this time. One thing I would like to note, while economic development is showing as being one of the divisions showing an increase, we did contribute quite significantly to the county surplus in 2020 through our, we secured our Fed Dev grant for the regional relief and recovery which funded much of our programming during Q3 and Q4. So subsequently, those funds will, will run out by the end of February, we'll have to spend them. And our funding source will really shift back towards our regular operating budget. So I know we, like I mentioned, we contributed specific to the surplus in 2020 and are gonna be delivering on that programming in 2021. So in terms of the budget line items where that shows up in, so the largest increase is obviously in the special projects line item, which is driven by our two deferred rural economic development projects. So that is our $91,000 Perth County Certified Experience Program and our $28.500 workforce engagement and traction program. So those also are, again, deferred from 2020, so showing up under the project expenses for 2021. But also the deferred revenue is being brought forward in 2021 as well. And then finally, the other budget driver here is our new special project included in the 2021 budget, which is development of a county-wide community improvement plan as a code recovery initiative. And we're also anticipating that to be supported through an application to, to the rural economic development program for 50% offsetting revenue. In terms of how some of our major projects aligned with the strategic priorities, so obviously growth and economic development is really where we find a lot of our activities fitting under. Again, I mentioned the two red projects that we're gonna be delivering in 2020, the workforce attraction and engagement and the certified experience program. Continuing to support shop local and shop small to keep spending in the community as well as targeted tourism support, particularly for restaurants and accommodators. as well as targeted tourism support, particularly for restaurants and accommodators, who we know have been disproportionately affected. Under goal two, regionalization and service effectiveness as well as goal four, community development and planning. Uh, this is where we see the community improvement plan as that regional COVID-19 recovery project uh being situated. Uh, something that is also uh in alignment with many of the lower tiers, you did plans and work plans. And the launch of our expanded farm gate program as a best-in-class award-winning program. Uh, under goal three, customer service excellence, uh, again, staying connected with our local businesses through continued engagement, including calls, surveys and business visits. When they do so, they really, uh, businesses in lower tiers are are main customers. We want to make sure we're staying connected with them as well as our support for communication. So we know that internal, external communications are are going to be critical for for businesses in uh during this time. So that is an area where we, we, economic development tourism supports the ongoing communications of the municipality. And then finally, under uh corporate sustainability, so while PC connect is not uh situated in the economic development and tourism budget, as Corey I mentioned earlier, it is a, the department does support this uh, this ridership and the growth of ridership to help that service hopefully become sustainable. In terms of the impacts of COVID-19, so we have built online delivery options and phased approaches for our our two red projects that were approved in 2020. So we are confident that in working with our ministry partners to to rejig those projects, we will be able to deliver them in 2020 and they won't be further deferred. Uh, again, we're planning for for business support programming, air reach and engagement with, with anticipating some restrictions. So we know that will be business as usual, but we are developing some uh, you know, unique ways to to still reach out to businesses. Uh, another key impact of COVID is obviously this continuous balance that we're going to be having with public health recommendations, while also trying to encourage uh economic activity and encouraging tourism. So that's a, a balance we're walking on a constant, on a day-to-day basis with with public health guidelines, encouraging people to shop local, to uh, you know, patronize local businesses, to engage in tourism activities, but uh not when the public health messaging is is contrary to that. I did mention uh this provincial tax credit for tourism within Ontario in 2021. Uh, that was announced in December by Minister and will uh provide a 20% credit for in in inter-province, or sorry, I should say in province travel. So this is something that really speaks to our focus in 2021 as the year of a of hyper-local tourism. Uh, another impact is our investment attraction activities will continue to be virtual for much of 2021. Uh, but one of the opportunities there is to take advantage of interest from companies that we've been hearing from, uh, looking to be closer to North American customers and diversifying supply chains in the, in the face of COVID, uh, having disrupted many of those. And then finally, uh, while this is our best laid plans, uh, we will need to continue to be flexible as new challenges arise and also take advantage of opportunities as funding becomes available. So things like our digital mainstream program, uh, you know, they were not part of our our business program in 2021, but when we saw the opportunity, we jumped on and were able to take advantage. So that's something that we know we'll have to continue to respond to in 2021. So without, I will uh turn it over for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for uh Justin?
Counselor Kasingberg.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Warden and and Corey for noticing. Um, uh, Justin, I I think one of the significant priorities of 2021 and perhaps later in in the year, if I look into my crystal ball, will be sort of entrepreneurial spark support. Um, I, I believe that we're going to see some more shifting in the business climate, uh, especially in the retail climate. But um, you know, across the board, uh, we are likely to see some demises of businesses unfortunately and and some with entrepreneurial drive who wish to um, take advantage of new opportunities and and start up in new areas. Can you comment on on how your plan will support those kind of initiatives as we probably come into Q4 of 2021?
Sure, and and through the Warden. So uh, you know, we do rely on our our partners in in the Scott Pro Center for for small businesses as one of our key deliverers and they deliver a lot of that small business programming on on our behalf. Uh, our plan in particular, I guess, the the one probably key component for 2014 is the community improvement plan. Uh, the the county-wide community improvement plan that we're proposing here would uh really serve as an enabler for small businesses to to, you know, revamp an existing property, uh, to set up a new, a new business operation and have some support uh to do so. So that's one of the, one of the uh components of the, of the uh, the plan that we're, we're engaging with. And I guess maybe just one, one other, uh, I know that we are also engaged with win this space and uh, you know, filling some of those vacant uh vacant buildings that may arise from COVID-19. Uh, and that's something that we were engaged with on an ongoing basis and hoping to see that. I guess we're not hoping to see many spaces needing to be filled, but if if there are, we're hoping to, you know, see that program continue to thrive in North Perth and maybe even uh look at expanding that beyond, beyond those borders.
Uh, if I may, one supplemental with regards to an approach like win this space, um, are, have you in your budget allocated appropriate funds to be supportive in that way, both in terms of staff time allocation and uh and uh funds to support the things like educational interventions and so forth?
Yes, and through the Warden, we do have a line in our, in our special project for business retention and expansion, which is where we would uh, you know, likely take advantage of those funds to support these kind of initiatives uh as they arise as well as uh, you know, launching some of those on our own. So yes, we do have, have built in some, some uh flexibility in terms of responding in those ways.
Just, just one more. I just want to be really clear here. Uh, with regards to building in that flexibility, um, have you actually increased that budget in a reasonable manner, given the circumstances that we find ourselves in?
So are, are, we, we have uh maintained much of our uh business retention expansion program from last year. Uh, I guess, you know, supplementing to that, if if our community improvement plan, if we do receive uh, funding from, from the province through some of these applications that we've, we submitted, then we would uh have some surplus funds from, from those uh some surplus dollars to allocate to that, those type of initiatives. And we've been relatively successful applying in grants uh previously, so we are, you know, hopeful that'll, that'll continue.
Any further questions?
Uh, Rhonda, I mean, sorry, Counselor Aggits.
Uh, just on the digital media squad, are we looking to hire someone um on a contract basis to to do that? Or is that going to be done by, from staff within?
So our, our current funding, actually, we were able to uh, it was scheduled to end in, in the end of February. We are able to keep our our digital service on another, uh, we can, we can a bit or two based on some uh additional funds we had from that program. But uh, I think that is one of the areas where uh, through the, through the implementation of the squad uh as staff, we have uh we've gave some extra teams through, through working with Clara, who's our squad provider. And uh, you know, we'll be able to continue to provide some of that services while not having that dedicated uh person budgeted here as uh, as budget presented. Uh, we are again hopeful that the province will uh maybe provide some additional funding for that, given the current situation.
That's where the increase came in the, in the salaries. Like I noticed, like, we're, we're over budget for actuals for 2020. So that's, I guess that's what jumped out at me.
Through the Warden, I can uh add to that. Yes, um, that is in itself uh the hiring of that position, but also being funded from the uh, um, essentially uh provincial grant line uh in the revenue side of things.
Yeah, no, I knew it was funded by the province. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Do not see any hands.
Okay, so then I guess we're going to move on. Uh, thank you, Justin. Good presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the next item and that's planning. Everyone's favorite topic. And we're going to have Sally doing that or?
Correct. Sally should be coming online and she'll have her uh presentation deck uh, ready to share her screen.
And there's Sally. Thanks Sally. You're up.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Hey. Through the Warden and members, to members of council, I'm bringing you some notes and uh information about the planning operational budget. Um, over the past year, we've been doing um mostly rebuilding and bringing together people and strategies and ideas towards some efficiencies and um for the planning service model and um all in an effort to support growth and development in our community. Some of the opportunities um coming out of a new service model in particular, which is really kind of the big picture um for planning, is that the efficiencies that we can gain will help us um from a fiscal point of view as well. And the opportunities that we have for efficiency um will be supported by a new official plan. So that's our big push for the year. And um, a cost recovery model that uh we've been talking about for several months now is, is an important part of our budget conversation. Some of the challenges in planning to come this year are not things that we can't overcome, but worth mentioning. And that is that the official plan project will bring uh the need and the desire for long or large-scale public consultation. And in a pandemic environment, that is going to be um more difficult. And we'll, we'll have to dig deeper to find the tools that we need in order to do that effectively for the community. And one of the other things that's on our radar is um, is working with IT to help us find a really sophisticated and um helpful file tracking system that we can use um toward better communication efforts with um both our municipal partners and uh in the public. The real financial story for planning this year is that um although expenses are up, um, and that's largely because of uh staffing, the new service model, uh, the revenue is also up and that is largely due to cost recovery. So what that means overall is that there is a decrease to the uh corporate levy. And um, it ends, it ends up with around um 225 on the levy. But of what it represents is a far greater shift of of um costs off the levy. Our strategic priorities and planning are very much aligned with the strategic priorities for the county. When you look at the two documents, the program document for planning and the strategic plan for Perth County, um, there are so many um congruences. And I thought um I would throw some of the ideas, the words, the buzzwords, if you will, from our planning document and the um strategy document into one sort of um piece of word art here, um, because it really does show the alignment. And that spans across each of the five goal sets, the each of the five areas of goal setting for the county from the strategic plan. Things like um solution mindset, um, process improvements, growth and development and uh corporate sustainability are found throughout those two documents. The impacts of COVID for planning um are about people. I know this is a, an, a department that is largely focused on land. But at the end of the day, what, what we often find is that our work is very much about people. And um, the impacts of COVID-19 affect uh meetings, not only meetings of um planning staff with, with applicants and with municipal partners, but, but also uh with each other. And it does um create a lot more need for intention around coordinating our tasks and our schedules. And in um, looking at those day-to-day tasks that just take longer um when you're working from home. And also um public engagement, as I mentioned before, is going to be a large, largely impact impacted by COVID-19. And we have some strategies in place. Um, and certainly more to develop with respect to reaching out to agency partners and some organizations in our community to help us reach the folks that are not online. Because we will be both engaging online tools, but also um have to work uh more diligently at finding other ways to communicate with people in general, but also for um the public engagement for the official plan. And that um is really the story of planning um from a financial point of view. It's a story of efficiency. Um, it process improvements and a story of um overall levy decrease for the, for the county budget. And I'm happy to take questions.
Thanks, Sally. Questions for Sally? And I can't see everybody, so if you see any, Corey, let me know.
For sure. I don't see any hands up.
Nothing yet? Okay, well done Sally. No questions.
Counselor.
Sorry, I must have missed.
This is probably a question more for Corey. What's the uh new office rental for planning and economic development? What's that amount?
That is, I think, around forty-three hundred per month or forty-five, around about. That's that for one Ontario street.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Nothing else?
Doesn't look like it.
Thanks Sally. We'll move on.
So uh, that's the end of that tab and we'll be moving on to tab uh six, uh, which is the Clerk's Division. And uh, Tyler will be popping up here quite shortly, I believe.
Well, he's sitting in the room.
Sitting right there beside you. I don't know how he's going to show his slides then.
Oh, we could turn the uh, I think Sean's going to do it.
Yeah, so we're just going to get the slides up here through Legislative Services, which is a participant here at the panelists. Perfect. So through the Warden, um, in front of council, right now is the 2021 budget, the operating budget for Legislative Services Division. Um, going through the 2021 opportunities and challenges, looking at opportunities, you're going to see a reoccurring theme through this presentation. Um, with the main focuses are going to be on digital records, record management, uh, customer service and accessibility. So with digital records, in 2021, we're really focusing on um records management and transitioning from paper records to more of a digital records with our uh current records uh software file hold. Uh, moving on to customer service, we do have the installation of the central reception now. So this allows us to streamline some processes for both internal and external customers. Um, I don't know if anybody's called recently, but you'll get the familiar Rachel Cannon and/or Olivia's voice. Uh, this allows us to have the same individuals to build rapport with customers uh when you do call into the county. And then moving on to accessibility. So we're going to continue to act as a leader with the accessibility issues across the county. Uh, this is a huge priority for us this year, uh, providing the service to the lower tiers as well. Some of the challenges that we're, uh, we're facing in 2021 is the shifting of the internal, external customer service needs and the uncertain legislative landscape due to COVID-19. So we've saw that in 2020 and we'll kind of just play the field with uh what that landscape looks like moving forward with 2021. Hopefully, uh, anticipating that we will be moving into uh in-person meetings um sometime this year. And we're doing establishment and implementation of new processes across departments. Obviously, this is complicated again with COVID-19, rolling out a records management program, uh, not necessarily having all staff inside the building. So that will be a bit of a challenge, but it's not something that we can handle. So again, so looking at the operating budget, so three uh different areas I wanted to uh point some um eyes at was the special projects line. Uh, so we have $2,000 for records management. So again, this is shifting the focus to digital records. Um, in 2020, we did purchase a scanner and we have been digitizing all our bylaws, minutes, um, and agreements as well. So with the weed and tree inspections, uh, 53,000, this is a service that's provided to lower two municipalities uh to manage the forest, uh, forestry bylaw. Um, this is a great value for for what service that we are getting provided. I know Marvin did approximately 96 uh NOIs last year. So uh, the, the budget line stays relatively the same as as the previous year. And then the accessibility advisory committee, um, $9,220. This is the consistency in the program function uh with COVID-19. Uh, there's a bit of a transition and shift in 2020. We've uh got an established meeting schedule and we're meeting regularly. So I'm looking forward to to help facilitate uh that committee and those committees uh needs in 2021. So looking at the strategic priorities for 2021, we are looking at regionalization and service effectiveness. So this is a strategic priority number two. This again is the shift of records management, uh, providing a high standard of accessibility services. And then review and amend the grant program as needed, something that we're going to take a look at for 2021. Strategic priority number three, customer service excellence. Again, this is expanding our customer service initiatives now that we have central reception here at the courthouse, as well as developing a commissioning program in relation to legislative requirements. So we're firming up that program and that'll be rolling out in the first quarter here of 2021. Strategic priority number five, corporate sustainability. So this is just ensuring consistency in all our committees. So we're going to be looking at all our committees, ensuring that they are all abiding by the procedure by law. And there's consistency with recording secretaries, minutes and agendas and where those files are being kept, so that we, anybody and everybody can access them. And moving everybody onto our iCompass platform, which is what we use for, for council. So the impacts of COVID-19. So potential legislation and meeting process changes. As we were aware, we're going to make that transition change in 2020. There's obviously the shift in the landscape. Some of our internal processes have changed as well, moving to online meetings as we are using the medium right now. That may again change depending on how things change in 2021 for COVID. And then stressing again, the importance of digital record keeping. We found, obviously with COVID-19, not having everybody inside the courthouse, we wanted to make sure that everybody could access files. So the first priority was bylaws and minutes and digitizing those, so any staff member can access those through a central repository while not being physically within the building. So that at this time concludes my presentation. Welcome. Any questions if there are any?
Counselor Edits?
I have a couple of questions. One pertaining to accessibility. I thought originally accessibility was going to be part of HR. So when did it shift to clerk?
Great. So, so through the warden, I believe that transition was happening actually prior to my arrival. So I don't know if Lori would like to touch base on that.
Sure. Thank you. Through the warden, accessibility, when we brought that to you, accessibility, we have three positions. We reduced it to two positions. And it was a blend of the separating out the actual functions within the accessibility portfolio. So you may recall that Sean McCoy is our train the trainer now for accessibility. He had obtained that training in, earlier in 2020. HR is still involved in accessibility, but what we're trying to do is, is work cross departmentally so that the right skill sets for the right job are performed at the right pay point. So for example, when we're looking at the staff that need accessible accommodation, those sorts of changes or working with the staff would be done by HR, is that's where that skill set is. And then for clerking of meetings and train the trainer for our lower tier members would be through Sean McCoy as the coordinator in Legislative Services. So it's a blend of both. And it's to make sure that we, we don't have staff performing work at a higher price point that we need to do, and that the accountability is with the right people. So it is a blend.
So who is, who is working?
Okay, I just wanted to add through the warden, the physical resource type change was, was between 19 and 20. 2019 and 2020 for the people resource associated with accessibility.
Okay, so are different ones working with the lower tier versus the committee, or is it the same department?
So through, through the warden, from a Legislative Services standpoint, we support the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee as well as providing training for the lower tiers. And we have worked into our work plan, which will be meeting quarterly with the lower tiers to provide training. And then we'll, we'll develop that entire program as well as for our services that we provide for the city of Stratford, that's also done by myself and Sean McCoy in Legislative Services. HR does take care of, as Lori mentioned, more the staff perspective at the center.
And the other question I have has to do with the salary line. It says to refer to the salary analysis, but when you go to the salary analysis, there's nothing there. But the salaries have increased, but when you go to the expert, the papers before the preamble, it says we're reducing staff from 5.7 to 5.0. So I'm just wondering why the, is that got to do with the accessibility committee, why those salaries have increased? Or what does that got to do with?
Through the warden, I can answer that question. That relates to salary resources of staff that are either have left the employee of Perth County as well as some employees that are currently in the dollars for salaries, but not a physical resource to the municipality. Those items should finalize.
Other questions?
A question, quite some time ago, we had a, a report come from staff on weed and tree inspections and cost recovery. And we were, I believe at that time, council deferred it for staff to discuss it with Marvin and bring a report back. And I don't believe we've seen anything. Now, where is that at?
So, so through the warden, thank you, Councilwoman. It is something that we intend to bring back relatively shortly. We've reached out to Marvin, which was the request of council to comment on that cost recovery model with respect to comparative municipality. So we do intend to bring that back relatively shortly. Hopefully, I believe it's in our work plan first quarter here.
I do not see any other hands.
So just further to Bob's comment, so once that does come back and we make a decision on it, you may see a revenue section in this department that isn't indicated there now.
Yes, through the warden, if it's, because it's not in place right now, you don't.
We can't, we can't anticipate it now, but if the change is made, then there will be revenue into this department from that cost recovery model. Okay, no other questions? We're going to move on to finance.
Thanks, Warden. I will try to share my slide deck. I guess I'm not prepared as everybody else is on getting up and ready here.
I'll let you off the hook because you've been helping me to pick out hands.
Yeah, sorry. When I do this though, I, my take on it, it ends up jumping on another screen. Okay, I'm gonna have to, just to give me, give me a second here. I'm going to stop this, and I'm going to share again. Okay, there's a slide. So thanks, Warden and council. My slide deck with relation to the finance division is here. Again, we do a similar format of all divisions and trying to provide kind of a systematic approach on how our business plans, not only look at opportunities and challenges, but also how, how we're trying to align with the strategic priorities of Perth County itself. So in front of you, some of the opportunities within the finance division in itself is, is, one of them is a basically citizen education. I, I feel it's an important factor of communication to the citizens of a, understanding a two-tiered system in itself, of what services are provided by the county as a region and what services are provided by the local municipality. That is a look at opportunity and how we can provide education to citizens on a two-tiered system itself. The second opportunity is again, the fiscally responsible utilizing funding from other sources, which is throughout this municipal budget, between the federal, provincial and other agencies. The challenges that we have are again, you'll, you'll see highlighted again later on, but related to COVID-19. Finance in itself didn't seem the day-to-day work change with COVID. It seems like there was additional financial requirements in relation to COVID with new grant applications and as well as the day-to-day work, but also providing information to the provincial government as well as the federal government in, in the overall COVID-19 area. The other area is, is, is basically strategic initiatives. And the challenge is, is, is do we have the appropriate amount of allocated resources to move these initiatives forward? I can see that as a challenge in finance, on being able to be part and supporting of all strategic initiatives in Perth County itself. So my challenge in 2021 is, is the overall resource allocation. Within the 2021 budget, you do see a 7% increase in salaries and benefits. But what did occur in 2020 was basically a shift in additional resources within the finance division of a finance and purchasing assistant position. This represents a full year of that position. Overall, no other major impacts to finance. Our strategic priorities in itself, the top one is corporate sustainability. Asset management being number one. Provincial regulations are providing a date of July 1st to advance our asset management to incorporate service levels in our linear assets. So service levels in itself are driven by council's level of comfortable, being comfortable with the level of services that are being provided in itself. So being able to hit the July 1 date in itself requires some information coming back to council in Q1 as well as Q2 to provide some information and data related to service levels and to get council support in that. The next item is a corporate service excellence. Again, as mentioned, is one of my opportunities is to look at citizen education on a two-tiered structure, as well as working efficiently and effectively with our local government. And in the third point, I'm going to point out is this is the finalization in a regionalized strategy in planning services itself in the single-tiered model. So that's in it to finalize that planning program in 2021. Impacts to COVID-19 was one of my challenges, and it stays to be one of my challenges for 2021. There's additional analysis and financial reporting required based on the pandemic and reporting back to other forms of government that are providing us funding, as well as continuing to support all divisions during COVID-19. That is it. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Corey?
See, I don't see any hands. But all of them have their hands up, but they, I'm just not letting you know if they have their hands up.
Okay, well, I can.
I don't see any hands.
Okay, then we're going to move on. And next one was.
Services. Yeah, IT. Start video. There we go.
Perfect. You're on, Steve? Well, yeah, you were. Split screen. You're good to go.
Am I good to go? Okay. Perfect. Good morning, Warden and members of council. I'll present the Technology Services Budget for 2021. So in 2020, technology services needed to pivot away from our scheduled project plans to refocus all of our efforts on the pandemic. We were able to react quickly, introducing rapid system changes and new services to meet evolving business requirements. So as we continue to deal with the impacts of the pandemic, there are a few opportunities and challenges facing us in 2021. Remote work and online meeting technologies provide us the ability to be productive just about anywhere and at any time. Reduced mileage and accommodation costs, increased staff collaboration and communication, and increased public participation in meetings are just a few examples of the opportunities the technology presents. The pandemic has also reaffirmed that we need to focus even more on the client experience by improving and offering more of our services online where possible. We can explore this opportunity by reviewing our current toolsets and systems, including web GIS, online forums, our website and video conferencing to see what options there are to provide more of our services online. We also see some challenges in the new focus on remote work setups for staff. Providing support to home-based staff adds extra level, sorry, layers of complexity that we will continue to face during pandemic restrictions. Home Wi-Fi setups, internet connection speeds and reliability are just a few things we can't control and must deal with when trying to support staff remotely with their issues. So a few areas of note in the 2021 operating budget include hardware maintenance. The change here includes the cost to replace our fleet of staff smartphones. As mentioned in the capital budget presentation, this amount is actually funded from the computer system reserves and the corresponding amount can be found under the revenue section. Telephone and internet. This line includes an increase to teleconferencing service costs due to pandemic impacts. This change is offset by a corresponding transfer from the reserve for COVID funding impacts also found in the revenue section. Network support, like most businesses, we have added new licensing costs for Zoom meetings, but the impact of this has actually been offset by other changes made to that line. And finally, mileage and professional development. Changes in these areas reflect our use of remote access and support tools and committing to online training options. A few of our key strategic priorities for 2021 include further expanding the use of our online meeting tools where possible during and after the pandemic. So we are currently working with provincial offenses staff to offer full video court options to the public during pandemic restrictions. But we will also review how these might be used once they're lifted. Development of an IT GIS master plan. So we will develop an IT GIS master plan that will help focus and guide our plans for the division to ensure we provide an optimal level of service for all clients. The plan will provide the opportunity to review how our services are delivered and to define what we want as the future state of technology services, including IT and GIS, and a high-level roadmap showing how we can get there. And upgrade internal telephone system software. So our current telephone system software is now in limited support with the vendor. So in order to keep current and active with support and to ensure staff benefit from new features and improvements, we will coordinate a system software upgrade with our support vendor, including new client software and training for all staff. So the impacts of COVID-19. So in a normal year, our work plan would include a list of specific projects we want to complete in addition to day-to-day upkeep work required to maintain our services. Instead, the pandemic called for us to take on a number of other priority projects, not part of our original work plan, including setting up expanded remote work systems for staff, rolling out public online streaming meetings, including county council, land division and certain POA court sessions, courthouse renovations, including a new central reception, POA waiting rooms and office spaces, and the new One Ontario office setup and related staff moves. Our work on these pandemic-related projects has resulted in a few impacts, including delays to other scheduled projects and work and an increase in staff workloads. So we will continue to monitor the workload situation and review possible options moving forward. Are there any questions on the Technology Services Budget? I'll be happy to answer. Counselor, well.
I don't have any questions on, on the budget. I congratulate you on adapting you and the staff to remote, online and everything else. Moving forward, I believe that when this COVID is over and we start meeting in the courthouse, live streaming will continue. And we need to. And we need to certainly improve what we're doing right now. And I'm going to pick on the warden. It looks and he is sitting totally across the room. You can't see whether he's smiling or growling. And I think we should be able to get his face up and do a much better job of live streaming. So I would certainly encourage us to prepare that and move forward and get some better quality equipment.
Thank you. No offense, Bob, but I kind of like it the way it is because you can't tell what I'm thinking because body language tells you a whole lot. Anyway, any other questions for Steve?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, thanks, Steve. We're going to move on.
Thank you.
And next is POA, I believe, is it not?
Court services, yes. Linda should be up here momentarily. Hi, Linda.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm just fine, Corey. Thank you. How are you?
Great.
That's good.
Morning, Linda. So we're ready to go.
Yes, I'm just going to share my screen. There we go. Are you seeing that?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. All right. I'm here this morning to present the court services POA divisional budget for 2021. Before I start, I need to thank Steve and Randy for all their help. Nothing that we've been able to accomplish in this last year would have been possible without them. Come on. All right. COVID-19 has certainly created its challenges for us, but we'll look at the opportunities. It's pushed forward the modernization of the POA courts so that we could have remote appearances and audio courts. We've been having the audio courts since July and just this week on January 26th, we held our first Zoom court. Renovations were completed in response to the COVID-19 to facilitate physical distancing. The prosecution is now physically separated from court administration, which satisfies the operational and prosecutorial sections of the MOU. There's now a waiting room that when we have in-person appearances again, it'll eliminate crowds in the hallway. Staff has more space and a designated workstation to reduce sharing equipment and to make physical distancing possible. Renovations have resulted in a 97% increase in our rental costs. But since our ability to collect and enforce fines have been impacted by order from the Chief Justice, the treasurer will be applying COVID funding to offset the rental increase cost for 2021. In 2022, the division will need to cover the increased rental costs from fine revenue. As far as our strategic priorities go, our first one is and always has been customer service excellence. We continue to work with the Minister of Attorney General, the Ontario Court of Justice, to continue to offer the remote appearances for defendants, to provide them with access to justice in these challenging times. On February 3rd, I have a meeting with the Regional Senior Justice of Peace to discuss remote trial scheduling. And that same day, I also have a verification meeting with MAGG's Recovery Secretariat for the purpose of preparedness for in-person court appearances when they're approved by the Regional Senior Justice of Peace. That's far off in the future, but preparing for that certification exercise would not have been possible without help from Lori and Tyler and Rachel and Nick and Sherry and all my staff. Since March 16th, 2020, we've not been permitted to convict defendants on filled respawn dockets. Until convictions register, there's no due date and no ability to enforce or suspend licenses. At a date when the Chief Justice allows, cases from January 2020 onward will be reviewed by Justice of the Peace so that a conviction can be registered. And license suspensions are also not permitted at this time, and when the Chief Justice allows, we'll return to our license suspension process. That all impacts revenue. Would simply be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Linda. I see one hand up the bottom. I think it's the counselor, right?
Corey wouldn't say my name, would he? I have a question. The provincial government loves to throw money at all the problems. I think our revenue is down 500,000. Is that right?
In that area.
Fines. Have we ever contacted them? I know in other provincial offices, say the one in the Brown Building behind you, they're giving extra money to them as a stip end to try to cover some of the costs. Is there any inclination? Can we talk to the attorney general, to somebody and say, look, we still had to do all this? You're giving money to every organization, the fairs, everything, and here's a government organization. We've received nothing. Is just putting it out there, wondering if there's any recourse to approach somebody, whether it's Randy or whoever?
I would have to defer to Corey on this. I believe he has some of the funding that has been applied for by the county has been applied to our operations, but I don't think that they can replace fine revenue.
Yeah, through the, through the warden, we have utilized COVID dollars to help mitigate the impact of this loss revenue. Are still, 2021 is based on a five-year average on what is presented in front of yourself as well. But what potentially could impact 2021 is again another section of lost revenue and potentially allocation of some COVID dollars related to that can be associated with this program itself. They, yes, there's no specific court service dollars related to provincial money. My understanding is that the allocation of the provincial money, phase one and phase two of COVID dollars are supposed to help support that.
Other questions?
Counselor Aggitts.
Just for clarification, the POA prosecution intern, is that only for one year?
Correct. Yeah, that is the end this year.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, thanks, Linda. I guess we're good.
Thank you very much.
And we get to be here. It's about 20 to 12. We'll get, we'll go a little longer. Hopefully we get through archives. We'll be good after that.
So after archives will be Public Works and then ending it off would be Paramedic Services.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're going to get through Paramedic Services because we still have a, you know, unless council wants to keep sitting there on Zoom. We do have a closed session and some stuff to do here later on. So let's, let's get through archives and we'll play it by ear here.
Sharing my screen. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Okay, thank you, Warden. Is that screen looking all right to everyone?
It is in the room here, but I'm not sure, but.
Can you, can you make it a little larger, Betty Jo?
Sure, just. Does that improve things?
That's much better.
Okay. I've just lost. Well, we'll see how we do here. So thank you, Warden, and through you, good morning to everyone. I'm grateful for this opportunity to review the proposed 2021 budget for the archives with you today. Okay, great. So providing effective and flexible customer service for researchers, donors and local governments in these challenging times is certainly one of our, our opportunities, if I may put it that way. Like so many local businesses and community services, archive staff are meeting the challenge by providing services by phone and email and with curbside pickups at this time. Because we haven't been able to offer exhibits or other events to drop in visitors, staff have taken the opportunity to permanently improve access to the collections by indexing and digitizing records, making them much more readily available to staff and researchers both now and in the future. Two temporary, pardon me, two archives clerks positions ended in 2020. So the timing lined up well to revise our operations, to work with one fewer staff while increasing the skill set and improving efficiency by bringing in one archives technician. This staffing change accounts for the budget decrease in 2021 and projecting into 2022 a smaller decrease that year as well. Otherwise, we are more or less holding the line on expenses while continuing to address the county's strategic priorities, particularly as they relate to corporate sustainability and customer service excellence, even as the pandemic continues to impact our operations. We were able to offer in-person research appointments for several months last year, and we hope to be getting back to that soon. We found access by appointment to be an adjustment, of course, but it did mean that researchers were able to have one-on-one detailed discussions with staff well ahead of their visits. So that meant that when they arrived, if indeed it was determined that it was necessary for them to arrive, if they weren't just looking for a particular photo or a bit of information that staff could send to them. So if they did need to come in person to review a number of records, they would arrive to find very records that they needed already and waiting for them at a reserved workstation set up for them. Having said that, during this time, staff, staff had to take time to do COVID screenings with our visitors and making sure that records and equipment were safe to use from person to person. And of course, it's difficult to plan public programming again this year, but work continues on getting ready to celebrate Archives' 50th anniversary in 2022. What was once a collection and a program that fit into the former coal storage room in the basement of the county courthouse is now well, for now, I'll just say that I hope it's a source of pride for all those who've played a role in building and supporting it. And I'll get back to you about celebrating what we've achieved so far later on. And here are some images of life at Archives prior to COVID as a reminder of how much we will enjoy tour groups, book launches and other community celebrations when the time is right. So thank you again. And through you, Warden, I'll be happy to address any questions.
Thanks, Betty Jo. Questions for Betty Jo?
Not seeing any hands.
Okay, well done. I guess we're good. We're going to move on. So our next item is Public Works.
Public Works. And I did keep, I told John he can't be very long because I do want to potentially get through these two divisions to hopefully have a little discussion after the fact as presented. So if John.
Are you going to go up, get me some lunch and bring it down to me?
I definitely can.
You may have to do. Council want to keep going and try to get through these two?
And like I said, I've kept John to a limited.
I've got a bunch of heads nodding up and down, so we're going to keep going. I just, you know, I realize people get tired of looking at a computer screen, but let's get John rolling and as long as you told it to be short and sweet, we've already done the capital on that one, so.
Great. Thank you, Warden. Good morning, council. Hope you can all hear me and see my screen here. Today, I'm presenting the 2021 operating budget for Public Works. And this, this year, we do have a few opportunities and challenges. And certainly the pandemic provides us some challenges with some of our maintenance operations that require a larger crew size and certainly working in close proximity. However, those challenges have provided us some opportunities to review some of our operating procedures, find some new technologies and contracting options. Another opportunity in 2021 is we anticipate to have a healthy winter maintenance reserve. And we're going to hear more a bit about that in a second. We also, this is not necessarily because of the pandemic, but something we're, we're very mindful of moving forward is we, we do have challenges in keeping increases in operating budgets low when we're facing increased corporate overhead and rising material and equipment costs. Your first tab in, in the budget binder is the Public Works Administration budget. And within this budget, we have corporate overhead, staff salaries and benefits, and for that staff, training memberships, professional development and some technology services. A good portion of this budget is corporate overhead, makes up about 83% or 1.366 million of the Public Works admin budget. For 2021, we have this budget set at $1,657,125, which is an increase of about 57,000 over 2020. We then take this budget and distribute it over our three divisions, roads, facilities and fleet. The Roads Division budget allocates funds for our road maintenance activities and is categorized in the following areas. So general maintenance, which are things like shouldering, line painting, signs, patrolling, things like that. We have a 2021 budget of 2,050,000. That's an increase of about 150,000 over 2020. Capital maintenance, which is funded from our capital roads reserve, goes to crack sealing and pavement preservation. And this year, we're budgeting about $590,000 for those, for those items. Winter maintenance makes up just over 3.8 million, and that's actually a decrease of about 572,000 over 2020. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our Roads Division has an administrative budget as well, and that's just over $2 million. And included here is 70% of that corporate or department overhead that we talked about in the PW administration. We then distribute that out over all our general maintenance activities and our winter maintenance. So within these two budget items here that make up about $5,825,000, 2, 2 million of that is, is in this budget. So basically a third of our operating budget for those items is, is overhead. We then have also revenue and reserve transfers, and this comes from permits and regional roads. And we also have some revenue from work for other municipalities. We do things like shouldering, line painting, sign reflectivity, things like that. In 2021, our Roads Division budget is set at $3,952,000. And that's a decrease over 2020 by about 440K. This reduction is primarily in winter maintenance. So just a little bit more on winter maintenance. So we take a five-year average when building, helping to build our budget. And this year, we're looking at that five-year average at about 3.7 million dollars. In 2019, if you recall, we did a number of renewals of contracts for material and service, service contracts, and that was greatly increasing in those costs in those areas, especially salt. Salt makes up about 40% of our winter maintenance budget. And when we were building the 2020 budget, we built that with the five-year average. And then we were projecting what that impact of those increased costs would be. So in 2020, we had a relatively high budget for winter maintenance, and then we had a rather light winter season. Flip side of that is, is that's good. We're, we're going to have a surplus and we're hoping and anticipating that that surplus gets diverted into the winter maintenance reserve, which we're anticipating to be at about $850,000. That's, that can be not pretty quick within several harsh winter seasons. And we've seen in the past the variances between winter seasons between. And we've seen in the past the variances between winter seasons between $100,000 and $300,000. Another item in our Roads budget that we took a look at is line painting. And we do center line painting every year. We, we do the yellow line, yellow center line, and every two years, we do the white edge line. Our equipment is certainly outdated, and it is at the end of its useful service life. In order for us to get new equipment, that's gonna be a minimum of about $500,000. We would need to increase our equipment rates. And then within this particular operation, we are really experiencing some increased costs with materials, and that's paint and reflective glass beads. So a number of municipalities in the area do contract this item. And through an analysis, we've shown that we can contract this out at a lower cost. Currently, we do provide services for line painting to three of our local municipalities. And we will be including this work in the county tender and contract. Also, we will be including in our Capital Road Projects line items for, for line painting. Move on to facilities, and facilities operating budget doesn't change substantially year to year. And expenses to operate all our facilities in 2021 are budgeted at 2.645 million. That's an increase of $178,000 over 2020, and that can pretty much primarily be contributed to COVID-related costs. Big impacts in 2021 are the addition of the rented space at One Ontario Street for planning and economic development and tourism, and additional cleaning, sanitization, and personal protective equipment at our facilities. The facilities also has an admin budget, and in 2021 is, is budgeted $368,000. We then distribute that as overhead to all of our facilities proportional to their particular operating budgets. Facilities then charges rent to all our departments and divisions based on the annual operating expenses and an annual component of capital maintenance costs. Fleet is very similar to facilities and doesn't change substantially year to year either. Each piece of equipment has line items that include insurance, fuel, labor for our mechanics, materials, and parts. Expenses to maintain our entire county fleet is budgeted just over 2.3 million, which is a decrease in, of 95,000 over 2020. Fleet Division generates revenue through equipment rates for our public works activities such as winter maintenance and shouldering and fleet rent in the case of paramedic services. So one of the challenges we have is a light winter season will decrease the winter maintenance budget and lower our maintenance costs on our tandems and triaxles. But we're not using that equipment as much, and that in effect lowers the fleet division revenue. Effectively, we're not putting as many dollars in our fleet reserve, and that goes to funds, fund our future capital replacements. So those are some challenges we're facing within fleet moving forward. And I know in 2021, Treasure Bridges is gonna be speaking a little bit more towards reserves, reserve levels, and how we can maybe kind of mitigate some of these pressures that we're seeing in, certainly with the fleet reserve. Our strategic priorities in, in 2021, our Public Works Business Plan focuses on regionalization and service effectiveness, which is goal two, and goal five, which is corporate sustainability. This is just a short list of, or highlights of our priorities in 2021, and it's certainly not exhaustive by any means. And I'd just like to point out that most of our road-related priorities will be in conjunction or collaboration with our local municipalities and our boundary partners. These things include our Capital Road Projects and fleet purchases. We'll be working with the Middlesex County, Persouth, Lucan Bidolf on the Whalen Line and Perth Road 151 asset assumption. We'll be doing an accident analysis at our intersections that will hopefully take a good look at Perth County in its entirety, and then working towards a transportation master plan or a framework for something like that. We'll also be updating our salt management plan, bringing to your report next week for reduced load restrictions. Also be updating and developing a winter maintenance plan in conjunction with our member municipalities and renewal of boundary agreements between the County of Oxford and Wellington County. We also anticipate a review of our travel permit process and the fees associated with that. And then just some courthouse camp, the campus review under facilities, courthouse elevator, and security and access upgrades. Impacts of COVID-19, certainly in 2020, we had to, we leased office space at One Ontario. As Linda alluded to there, we did some renovations to the courthouse for provincial offenses. And because she's got more space in the courthouse, her rent line has certainly increased. We've had to do a lot of additional clean and sanitization in our facilities, and that's sort of indicated in, in our facilities budget for 2021. And that includes personal protective equipment as well. Our, our maintenance activities still, the ones that require larger crew size and working in close proximity will be challenging. Another thing I think we'll see in some of our facilities projects this year is the cost of materials and availability, availability of contractors. However, the one thing that certainly this pandemic has, has shown us there, and certainly from a public works perspective, I, I know we're very proud of how well and closely we work with our local municipalities. And with this pandemic, those collaborative efforts have been brought to the forefront even more. And they've provided us more opportunity to work, work collectively together and to be effective. And we certainly expect that to continue in 2021 and well beyond. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Questions for John?
Counselor Aggitts? And John, if you want to stop sharing your screen, then everybody can be seen.
Okay.
Just wondering, under facilities, our EMS base in Mitchell seems to be costing us an awful lot of money. I know it talks about the in-floor heating issues and the replacement of the hot water heater, but I'm just wondering what's going on in that facility, being it is so much more money than the rest of them.
Yes, thank you. Through the warden, yes, certainly with, with the facilities budget and the, the sheets that you see in your budget binder. Unfortunately, what you, you see a very high-level budget there where you see expenses and revenues. And with the expenses, there are a number of items within that budget, line items, and they're shown in totality on the final page of the facilities budget. So some of those line items are things like amortization, things like that. So we do have a little bit higher operating costs within, at the Mitchell Paramedic Services, but some of that can be attributed to amortization and interest. And I see Treasure Bridges nodding his head, so I think, I think I've correctly answered that.
That is, that is correct. I think the cost in relation to the Mitchell base exceeded Milverton, and essentially, a list was in addition. So out of all of our bases, I believe it was the most expensive to build originally, which incurs more amortization.
Other questions? Do I see Counselor Wilhelm saying, go up?
Yes, and I might have missed it. On Roads, John, sixty-seven twenty contractor. That's up $600,000. Can you explain that?
Right. Through, through the warden, that's likely, and Treasure Bridges can correct me if I'm wrong. So the contractor line is the total of all our line items within our activities that are contractor-related. So things like our winter maintenance contractor. And I think why you're seeing the big increase in 2021 is likely because of capital maintenance and our pavement preservation program this year. So that work is done by a contractor, and I could, without just referring to the binder there, I think that's about $590,000 right there for that contractor item.
Just to add to that, yes, and that's an increase of about $400,000 from the previous 2020 budget. So contractor in itself would increase about $400,000 just in relation to John's capital maintenance program within the operations.
Other questions? Don't see any. Thanks, John. We're moving on. We're gonna try and keep going here.
Yeah, I also kept Chief Adair on a strict limit, too. I think John went over about two minutes and thirty-eight seconds, and I'll talk to him after this presentation.
Whatever.
I know there are some things in paramedics that slightly changed since the budget, but I'm not sure if we got that in time for last year or this year. Like that money they covered on the, on the part-time hours.
Yeah.
Turn a light on. You can't be seen very well.
I don't know what to do. You're gonna be seeing a presentation in any case. The lights are on in my office, and it's perhaps the window natural light coming through. Good, I guess it's, we're just into afternoon. Counsel, through the warden, I'll provide this presentation. So let me just pull up on the screen here. And click share. And we should be live. Hopefully, everyone can see that. Perfect. All right, so through the warden, this is the paramedic budget meeting with our Perth County template here. And I'll walk us through it, and as in all other presentations, questions either throughout or at the end. So our first slide here talks a little bit about the challenges of going into 2021, and it should be no surprise to anyone that COVID-19, of course, remains the focus and as well as one of the significant challenges at paramedic services. And we'll go through some of those challenges. One of the things, though, is that we're in this ever-changing landscape of health and the needs of the right pairs of our Perth County change from sometimes on a daily basis, sometimes on a weekly basis. And we continue to be able to step up to the plate and help meet those needs as required. So I've been real proud of all the work that everyone has done right from our paramedics to all the support divisions within this municipality and council for supporting us to be able to achieve some of those objectives of keeping our populations healthy. Employee wellness is indeed one of our challenges in terms of how, how our paramedics are reacting both psychologically and physically to the health emergency, and it's something that we continue to monitor and invest in. We've launched our breakwater program and for, for debriefing, and we continue to support our paramedics in that way. But it is one of the challenges that we see that will be going into 2021 is we're in this for the long haul, and how do we continue to support our staff? Funding related to the pandemic certainly is a challenge, and we've been working hard in the background and thank, thank you to, again, our staff and to Cory as well for setting things up in a way that we can achieve cost recovery through some of our programs in terms of when we go into our local seniors homes or LTCs or retirement homes. We also just, it was announced, I have a letter over here, January 20th, from the Ministry of Health, that they will be funding up to $1.1 million for COVID-related expenses for Perth County. So that's excellent news. That also will cover some of those, will cover the provincial costs or shared cost for the part-time funding calculation error that we've discussed previously in November during council. So a little bit of good news with respect to that. In 2021, I was on a call with the Ontario Paramedic Chiefs, and while the province hasn't announced that they'll continue formally fund some of the COVID-related costs into 2021, the telltale signs are that we expect, and certainly are advocating as the Chiefs of Ontario, to continue with that so that we can continue to respond to the health emergency in the way that we have been in the past, and that it takes the pressure off our local municipalities and counties so that we can continue to provide those services. Some of the other challenges that we've seen is supply chain and pricing issues. And you'll see in this presentation that we'll be working on some of those, looking at making sure that we can most effectively purchase supplies moving forward in the new year. The new ways of doing business, again, we are in a constant state of change, and that can happen almost on a daily basis, and needs, it's all new. And, you know, as the vaccine becomes more prevalent, even some of our needs within our paramedic service are changing. As the virus continues to do things like mutate or whatever, then the way we do business also needs to change and adapt to that. So some of it's known, some of the things are in place. We have new policies that are launching, but some of it's unknown yet. So we're prepared to continue to respond to that. Full-time and part-time hours, I just, I discussed that a little bit, and that was with respect to that. It's a challenge. It's the first year that we've made the adjustments, so we'll be monitoring things very closely. And to do that, I've also created a budget, a budget team that will be looking at our budget and monitoring staffing hours on a monthly basis. And that will include the treasurer, myself, and one of our deputy chiefs. I'm gonna switch the slide over to opportunities now. And opportunities include a response to COVID-19, so continuing to improve the health of our region, of our county. And part of this is also, you know, keeping children in school and persons at work to the best we can. As an example, when we do deploy our swabbing team to either an area in the community or deploy our swabbing team into a retirement home or long-term care facility, we're very efficient at it. We go in there, we can get in and get out and provide results in a timely fashion, which certainly has a positive impact on persons' lives. So we're gonna continue to respond to COVID as required throughout this year, and we do see it as an opportunity to be able to provide that service to our community. Under organizational effectiveness, a few things that will be going this year that are in our business plan, and you'll see it in our business plan as well. We'll be doing a review of the fleet and best practices to make sure that we're doing things as cost-effectively as possible within the municipality. We'll continue to leverage Medevy to find best pricing for options for equipment and supplies and do a bit of an evergreening project to make sure that, which is more on the capital side, but make sure that our equipment is earmarked as most appropriately as possible. We'll be looking at our deployment plan, which is how we allocate resources to our emergency response across the county. We'll be looking and make sure that we're doing things in an effective way and bringing back results. I'll be presenting an annual report to the MSSC in March. And the Ministry of Health, we actually have a Ministry of Health Service Review this year, which is our, like our accreditation, and that's in Q4. And we expect that it's gonna be going to Q4. They have one that they're doing under the umbrella of COVID at the moment. So it's a little bit different, but we do need to put some time and resources into that to make sure that we're prepared for that as well. Under system sustainability, we're looking at new technology that is available now in the province. It's available really in many places across North America, in fact, the world. And that would be having real-time data and connectivity with dispatch to our paramedic trucks, to our paramedics. So if a call comes in that it can drop on a com- Uh to our paramedics, so if a call comes in that it can drop on a computer screen, um it will be able to provide mapping, it connects with the five on one system within um municipality and. And will help us to um do our job better and reduce the uh potential of human error as well. And uh so that's some new technology that is available to us now that hasn't been before, so that is in our uh plan here. Um and then uh finally, um. Um the customer service excellence, um continue our progress with the mental and the great or mobile integrated health. With a focus on uh coming up with a clear plan and how we're going to continue to address mental wellness for the residents within our community. We're gonna be looking at um uh palliative uh program. Uh training as well, so end of life uh training, which is through a palliative uh program and it's formal training that's been approved by. Uh physicians and um will add a great value to. Uh not just how our practitioners or our paramedics respond to the end of life issues, but uh persons across um the entire. Uh spectrum of uh responses that we do, uh because it covers areas of um. Um self-awareness for paramedics, um decision-making and some of those other areas, so we're looking at investing in some of this training, so our paramedics are prepared to. Uh continue to best serve our population. Um and we're gonna continue to seek under that umbrella um funding options and avenues uh through uh places like uh. The Ministry of Health um as they become available and apply for those. So those are some of the opportunities that we'll be looking at, which brings us to the next slide. And some of the programs I was talking about are highlighted here, so. Our part time and full time staffing is at about eight point one million dollars for two thousand and twenty one, that does include the adjustment of. Um the uh that does um resolve the uh uh full time hour error that occurred earlier. Um we're we're looking at legal costs this year of about forty five thousand dollars, it is a negotiation year and we're hoping to with our positive labor relations uh right now. Be able to leverage that and uh use our HR manager to actually offset some of that uh throughout the year, but we are prepared. In the event that we require some uh legal consultation. Um education development, we're looking at our. We're looking at that palliative care training that I was uh uh talking about, uh providing that to all of our paramedics. But then we're also looking at um in this year within that budget line, uh continuing to develop our um mobile integrated health paramedics. Uh continue to develop our leaders um as well as providing any specific uh paramedic or covid related training that's required. Um as a result of uh covid. Technology services. Um and on here I talk about the new CAD link uh connection to dispatch. And so this year, our budget line in two thousand and twenty was around one hundred and one thousand dollars. We're looking to increase that so that we can tap into our mobile connectivity data um that we're talking about, um so that we can actually have the. Uh real time data feed between our ambulances and dispatch, again to um improve information sharing. Um to uh increase or or decrease the requirement for quality assurance, um to have better quality assurance, in fact. And uh to provide real time mapping to our paramedics to uh find their way to emergencies. Um so that would come with some great efficiencies and uh it has become available to us, Oxford County has successfully implemented. Uh this uh similar program and I've had opportunity to talk to their chief as well and uh they are reaping some of those benefits, so that's one of the things that we have added this year. Um as that technology emerges and the province has made it available, um the link available to us. Our current records management system program is the actual program that enables us to uh tap into that, so. It's all integrated, it's a new module that we would have to add. Uh internet and telecommunications, um there's a slight uh increase from last year, um. We're looking at a difference of um. A slight difference, but we're looking at it going up just slightly to cover increasing costs in telecommunications and internet fees for our mobile connectivity program, but also for our. Um uh cellphone data plans with uh tha- that we have where we have cellphones in all of our ambulances. And then we looking at our protective um equipment. A one time uh in- injection of around thirty thousand dollars that we put into the budget. Uh to make sure that we're realistic in um meeting some of the covid needs that we're entering into uh for two thousand and twenty one. Um as well as a one time adjustment uh to medical supplies of around ten thousand dollars for the um. Um to to uh have a realistic medical supply budget since the last five years, we were typically um slightly underfunded in that. Again, we will be looking at those efficiencies, however, in terms of our medical supplies this year and making sure that we are um doing the best we can for. Uh purchasing and uh finding uh efficiencies were uh available. Our strategic priorities are things that I've really already discussed, um but our strategic priorities are to continue to focus on covid and the and meeting the needs of our community. Uh continuing to um have a strong emergency response program where we're able to respond in an emergency. As we always do to the needs of our community. We are going to evaluate this program and make sure that we're running as efficient as possible. Uh and uh moving resources around to meet all the needs of all of our uh lower tier municipalities. We're gonna be looking at um our mobile integrated health team as well and uh where we need to go on that. We'll be looking at the uh technology that I was um um and and quality assurance and we've already discussed a little bit of that with respect to. And the employee wellness would be the last thing that we are continuing to look at and I mentioned that how we're. Looking at peer support and I continuing to develop leaders within our organization so that we're ready for succession planning. With that, impacts of covid nineteen, I think I've really gone over many of these. Um uh previously, so I might just uh skip over the slide in um interest of time. And um we'll be going to uh questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, uh good presentation, questions for Mike on paramedic services? You must have did a really good presentation, oh, there goes a hand, Councilor Wilhelm, I think it is.
Yep, uh I still would like to see analysis of uh of uh the maintenance done on our fleet of ambulances, et cetera. By the dealers versus uh the uh fellows up in Mitchell and uh I would like to. Look at have them look at uh possibly uh our techs, Ian Mitchell, doing service work for the lower tiers on. Uh snowplows, et cetera.
So so through the word and I'll start with the first part of that answer and then maybe pass on the second part um about the snowplows, um. With 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 respect to that, thi- thank you, uh Councilor Wilhelm, um I'm pleased to report that we're probably about three quarters of the way through doing that analysis, um. And uh we're just looking at parts right now in terms of uh some of those fundings, but we have looked at some of the labor costs, so stay tuned and we will. Report back to uh yourself and to council and over to Cory.
Uh yeah, I additionally through the warden, uh I yes, uh we've been working with uh Medevi. Uh reviewing that with uh also uh Director of Public Works McCollum. And uh coming up with uh that analysis uh to be back to council in the first quarter of this year.
Okay, any other questions for Mike when we got him on the line?
No, great, I would like to see that report as well that Bob just talked about, thank you.
Yep, okay, Councilor Callum. Glad you guys brought it up, cuz that was gonna be one of my questions later on. Anything else? I'm not seeing any hands go up. Just in behalf of council staff, I want to thank paramedics for all they've done the last month. You've been in some pretty tough challenges. Your staff's been in tougher challenges, so pass that along, I want you just to can pass along our thanks to them. For what they've done through this pandemic in the last month. Cuz they've got more courage than a lot of people would.
For you, Warden, thank you, I couldn't agree more and I express my absolute um how proud I am for each and every one of them. I know that it's been trying for some and it's been um. And and they've stepped up to the call every single day that they come to work, so I will for sure pass it on and I'll send a note out on uh this Friday to all of our paramedics. As a general update.
And thanks, Mike, Councilor Casenberg has something, I think.
Yes, and and um Chief Adair, uh you know, on behalf of North Perth in particular, uh same comments. I released a video this week that expresses appreciation for all of the support that we've received with Correscent Care and. And if your team hasn't seen it, I'd appreciate them seeing it, it expresses the community's thanks to Perth County EMS amongst other partners.
See, Mike, he's branding it, not like the news that just says the local paramedic service.
Well, I do appreciate that uh Counselor Kaisenberg and um will definitely or Mayor will definitely um. I'll share that as well, I'll share that link, so I haven't seen it yet and I look forward towards uh finding it, thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, thanks, Mike.
Okay.
The uh budget presentation. So first and foremost, I need a resolution that says Perth County receives the operating budget presentation. Move by Counselor Callum, second by Counselor Wilhelm, those in favor? That's carried, we'll go a little bit further and we'll see where we're at here, so if we've received it all, we've made a couple of little adjustments. Are you willing to?
Through the word, through the word, do you wanna just uh with those adjustments, uh basically, uh it has no change on the levy percentage? Cuz it was less.
That little amount's changed nothing.
Yeah, for sure, so all I could just highlight then is that the levy um. Uh basically for two thousand and twenty one would be seventeen million, one hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty eight dollars.
Okay, I see Bob Wilhelm's hand up, Counselor.
Yes, uh a couple of things, um. Before we complete this, I'd like to see it uh all the reserves. That we have, are they finished for two thousand and twenty by any chance, Cory, yeah?
Finished as in what they the balances are sitting at?
Yes.
Um they have not been finished, but if we if I could share my screen, I could show you the estimated uh reserve balances. That were in the budget binder, if you would like to look at that, uh where those reserve balances sit. Uh everybody think has it in front of them, but if they go back to tab the first tab. And behind the first, the tha- that's where the continuity of reserves are. And basically, um the only slightly impact to that would be the surplus in wi- winter maintenance. And that winter maintenance reserve being at eight hundred and fifty thousand versus what's sitting in the binder. But I I could bring it up on screen as well, if that's what uh Counselor Wilhelm would like.
Uh no, that that's fine, the question I get, there was two pages of reserves, is that correct?
Yep, is it forecasting what uh two thousand and twenty two would look like as well?
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually show one as December thirty first, twenty one, and we show one as December thirty first, twenty two.
Correct, and that sorry, and that should be the uh still forecasted in a way with uh how two thousand and twenty will end. Uh on where the reserve balances are forecasted at.
Counselor Wilhelm, your hand is moving again, I think.
So you don't uh forecast any major changes uh versus uh what's in the book here?
Correct, we tried to take into those forecasts back in uh September, October. To develop this uh forecasted continuity of reserves for uh two thousand and twenty one and two thousand and twenty two.
And and that includes the funding that we've received from the province, et cetera, uh.
Correct. Based on that, it's it's indicating that uh uh we'll most likely utilize all of our reserves for covid in two thousand and twenty one. Um the indication is is that we could still stay flexible with the additional money from the phase two, which came late in uh uh or E- I can't remember, early two thousand and twenty one. Or late two thousand and twenty.
Well, the announcement they made the other day wasn't new money, that was just old money reannounced.
Correct, we've already incorporated that OSIF money into the uh roads tenure continuity.
Okay, other comments or questions with regards to the finalized budget here? So are you willing to pass a motion to approve this budget? Capital and operating at this point, we've already pro- done most of the capital. It's basically, we're working on the operating now. Rhonda?
Well, I believe, and I brought this up before, we have some businesses who are gonna be in some dire straits here and I think we need to help them somehow. Even if it's a small thing that we do, but um it still bothers me that we have so much in our county levy levy stabilization reserve, I know we use that. Some other things and Cory alluded that the last time I asked this question, but I think that we need to take some money out of that reserve and we need to lower our rate. It doesn't look like it's a lot that they pay um per household, per farm, but when you start adding the. The uh lower tier portion onto it and the education tax onto it, some of these people can't afford to pay this. And I think that we need to do something to help them. And if it's meaning that we take one percent of our budget, I'm not taking saying we need to take it all out. One percent is a hundred and sixty five thousand, but I'd like us to take at least one percent, maybe one and a half percent at a levy stabilization and lower the uh rate of the budget.
Other comments? Counselor Wilhelm?
I would agree with the Counselor Aggots on that.
What do the other counselors think? Don't everybody speak at once. Counselor Casenberg?
Could I just ask Cory for um thoughts on implications of that action?
Uh yeah, through the warden, um uh utilization of a reserve that uh is addition to the reserve that's already being utilized. Will put a hundred and sixty five thousand onto our two thousand and twenty two year. Um we've indicated if 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 everybody goes to the binder in the three year indication, we're already looking at a five point six percent increase. Uh following the mitigation strategy that's within the binder, uh basically what you're indicating is that that percentage will now be six point six percent. Start off point for two thousand and twenty two.
So what you're saying, Cory, is pay me now or pay me later?
The 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 problem is is with OMPF reductions, uh we have to replace that million dollars of OMPF money. Um this budget does uh reduce it uh about one point three percent utilizing the uh levy stabilization reserve. Uh taking that two hundred and sixteen thousand, which is within the budget, out, we would be sitting at four point eight one percent. So we did bring it down to three and a half and with growth, uh it's actually a two point six seven percent increase to the levy for two thousand and twenty one.
Counselor Aggots, I think, hands up.
So at the lower tier, I asked somehow we bring our reserves into um our budget without. Doing just what you talked about, making that increase big for the next year, and so what can the county do, there is going to be growth. So why can't we take the money out of reserves this year? And I know Rhonda Fisher's found a way to use some of our reserve that we've had to bring it back in, that it's not going to affect in future years through the growth. So is there any way that the county can do that as well?
Um with growth as well as and it's it it can be an unknown or systematic forecast. The the difficulty with this is that uh uh the county of Perth uh OMPF will be zero. Um uh it's easier for Perth East to look at growth because they are actually receiving more money in in uh OMPF. Uh and forecasted in the future, so uh Perth East actually received forty thousand more in OMPF money from the previous year. They can expect to receive that additional forty thousand in uh two thousand and twenty two, based on the same structure that we have. We as a county itself are losing a hundred and eighty thousand this year and another hundred and fifty three thousand next year. Our levy mitigat- uh levy stabilization mitigate mitigation strategy is starting at two hundred and sixteen thousand. Is starting at two hundred sixteen thousand and it needs to get down to zero. Because we cannot continue to leave that reserve amount on the levy. Because when it does stop, when we run out of money and this strategy actually does. Take that million one and we would not have any of that. Once OMPF is completely gone from the municipality. So in itself, we were, the strategy is is this reserve. Usage will come down to zero by the end of OMPF reductions.
We didn't use our OMPF as our. Increase in Perth East. We used. The new businesses and the buildings that we're going to have, but something that hasn't come up today. And any of our discussions that came up in Perth East as well is. We were told that if the small businesses cannot pay their portion of the taxes that could be transferred to residential. And I haven't heard that. Come up anywhere and we were told that was a county decision. Do you know anything about that?
Through the warden, I believe that's the indication of the optional small business option class. So utilizing a break on business, it does significantly affect residential because they pay. Overall, within Perth County, sixty percent of the overall levy. It will still impact farm as well because it's shifting from small business to the two major classes. Farmland and residential, which makes up about ninety seven percent of the total levy that is paid. So a tax break on small business. Because it's only seven percent of the base is not going to significantly impact. Residential, but it will increase residential as well as increase the component of farm, farmhouse and farmland.
Okay, I still have trouble that we have all this money put away when we have businesses that are going to go down. So I. I think that we need to take some money out of stabilization. I realize it's going to affect us next year or the year after, but I think. We need to do something this year for the for our ratepayers.
I see your hand go up, Counselor, right? Yeah, just Corey, we go from eighteen million to fourteen million reserves and the next year we go from fourteen to ten. So we're already using, but we're going to replenish that or is there nothing in here? That's eight million dollars.
Correct. Based on the continuity of reserves over the next three years, we'll be utilizing more money in those reserves than we are actually putting into the reserves.
So we have to look at the fact that we're going to, we're going to go down forty percent in our reserves. Everybody talks about it. Hey, at our council, I talk about it all the time. We have, we have eighteen million dollars in West Perth reserves, but but we're using eight million of it and we're going to recoup part of it. So I guess it's a fine line to walk, what we have at the end. I think somebody there said a few minutes ago, either pay now or you pay later. Take your pick. So wishes of council. I've heard a bunch of different. Options here. Anybody else got anything to add? Counselor Casenberg?
I'd be prepared to move forward with this budget and approve it.
So you're making that a motion?
I can do so, yes.
Thank you. Do I?
And I will, I will second it, Doug Kellam.
Okay, so I have a mover and a seconder. Counselor Casenberg and Counselor Kellam. That Perth County approves the two thousand and twenty one capital and operating budget in principle. And direct staff to bring back the necessary bylaw to that effect. Any more comments or questions? Might have to get my glasses off for a better look at this one. Those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, it's passed. I had to was doing, but I was counting one, two, two, four, six. It's passed, so it's passed. Thank you very much. Thanks, Corey.
No problem, Counselor. You just send in thank you to the counselors and the presentation of this operational budget to you guys.
You got to remember the key figures, two point six seven. And hopefully we will have the growth. To bring that impact down next year because if you're looking at five, almost six percent next year, as is right now. Or we'll get the new assessment brought into place.
For sure, and that will definitely impact again, but it's difficult to forecast that. I'm going to say if if the province puts a pause on it, then. We're going to be in definitely more trouble in next year, so.
Okay, we're going to keep moving on. It's getting a little later. We haven't got a whole lot to do. Somebody's cooking lunch out behind and it's driving me crazy. So council reports. Do we have anything for council reports? Don't see anything. Bylaws. We have bylaw and this bylaw is in reference to the OPA we discussed earlier. Bylaw three, seven, nine, seven dash two, oh, two, one. Be read a first, second and third time and finally passed this twenty eighth day of January, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? It's carried. And I have another bylaw, three, seven, nine, eight dash two, oh, two, one. Be read a first, second and third time and finally passed this twenty eighth day of January. Two thousand and twenty one, and that goes back to the two OPA that was reported on earlier. Move by. Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor Eggers. Those in favor? Carried. Thank you. And now we have a closed session. And it shouldn't be too, too long, but we do have to go offline for that. So that'll be a couple of minutes till we get set up. Oh, sorry. I'm trying to get done because I know you, I can see you guys getting fidgety too. Were there any notice emotions? Don't see any. Other business? Not seeing any. Announcements? Closed session. I need a motion to go into closed session. So we can change things around, moved by Council McDermott, second by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? It's carried and we'll be what, two, three minutes, Sean? We're good. Okay, so we're back in live streaming here. And we have a couple of little things to do. We need a confirmatory bylaw and a motion to adjourn. And I have a bylaw, three, seven, nine, nine, two, oh, two, one. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held January twenty eighth. Two thousand and twenty one is read a first, second and third time and finally passed January twenty eighth. Two thousand and twenty one. Move by. Counselor Duncan, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? It's carried. And the final resolution is that county council be adjourned at. Twelve fifty two. Move by. Counsel Counselor Wilhelm and second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much for your indulgence. That's a long time to be sitting in front of the screen, but. Thank you very much. We'll move on to other things next meeting and that will be next Thursday.